Councilman Velez, he went off camera, so he's gonna go put a red tie on. Oh, you're still on camera?
I am on camera. You know, let me see. Hold on. I got red here.
Viva Dominicanos.
Yeah, I got all the country.
President, we are live.
Thank you. Thank you, Ryan. Good evening, Madam Clerk. On behalf of the municipal council, I would like to welcome you all to this regular meeting on the City of Patterson, October tenth, seven P M. Twenty twenty-three. Madam Clerk, let's call the meeting to order.
Yes, Mr. President, the meeting is now called to order. Roll call for municipal council regular meeting of Tuesday, October tenth, two thousand twenty-three at seven P M. Councilman Abdulaziz, Councilwoman Cotton, Councilwoman Davila.
Present.
Councilman Jackson. Councilman Colleague.
Present.
Councilwoman Mims.
I am here, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Odin. Councilman Velez. Mr. President.
Present, Madam Clerk.
Present.
Mr. President, this evening's prayer will be rendered by the Honorable Dr. Lysa Mims, Councilwoman Large and Pastor of New Beginnings Christian Outreach Ministries in Patterson, New Jersey. This is being followed by the flag salute, which will be led by the Honorable Alex Mendez, our council president and third ward councilman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The scripture declares, this is the day that the Lord has made it, so we shall rejoice and be glad in it. We are grateful unto God, who always gives us the victory and causes us to triumph. Let us pray. God, our Father, we thank you because we are living in serious times, not just here locally, but abroad and in our nation. So, God, we lift up Israel. We lift up all of those people that have lost their lives. We lift up the war that they are in, and we pray for peace. We pray for the city of Patterson because Patterson needs healing. We pray for all the families that have lost their lives in the senseless violence and the shooting, those people that are deceased, those people that are no longer with us, those people that are sick, those people that are shut in. We pray for our children and our seniors and our workers and our mayor and our council and everyone that lives in the great city of Patterson. God, we pray that you will build a hedge of protection around our city, around this community, and we say, no more fatalities, no more deaths. We pray for healing. We pray for joy. We pray for strength. We pray for love. We pray for unity, oh, God. We pray that this city shall not only be stated, but it will be known as the city of righteousness. So, God, we lift up this meeting before you on tonight. We pray for peace in this meeting. We come against confusion. We come against any strife. We come against any malice. We come against any division, oh, God, but tonight shall be a night of peace. We declare and decree it, oh, God, because it has been ordained before the foundation of the earth that where there is unity, there is strength. So, God, we declare it, we pronounce it, and we call it done. And this is our prayer. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. For the flag salute, I will stand up right next to the flag. Our pleasure lead you to the flag of the United States of America. And so the public will sustain one nation, under God, indivisible, where living in justice for all. Let's now have a moment of silence for those that lost a loved one with a sense of violence that go around the war and also in the city of Patterson and for a true, our veteran, our senior, and the entire city of Patterson. A moment of silence, please. Thank you, Council Callie. Madam Clerk, who will please read the statement of compliance?
Yes, Mr. President. Statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Law for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Today's meeting date is October tenth, two thousand twenty-three, and the time is seven oh nine P M. Adequate notice of this meeting was compiled and disseminated in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law in the following manner. One, the annual notice of regular meetings and workshop sessions of the municipal council was compiled for the year two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four on or about July one, two thousand twenty-three. Two, a schedule of the regular meetings and workshop sessions of the municipal council for the year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four was duly transmitted on or about July one, two thousand twenty-three. Two, the North Jersey Herald News, the Record, the Arabic Voice, the Italian Voice, the Pasay County Pulse, Dominican news, La Quisque Internacional, El Especial, the Patterson Press, the City Post News, Tap into Patterson, the weekly Bangla Patrika, in addition to any other publication duly requesting such notices. Three, the schedule of the regular meetings and workshop sessions of the municipal council for the year twenty twenty-two, three, twenty twenty-four was permanently posted in the lobby of City Hall, first floor, in a place reserved for the announcements of this type. Four, the schedule of the regular meetings and workshop sessions of the municipal council for the year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four was duly filed with the municipal clerk. And five, a copy of the schedule of regular meetings of the municipal council was mailed to any person requested and paid the fee authorized by the Open Public Records Act. The public notice, first one to NJ SA ten colon four dash nine point three, the regular meetings of the Patterson Municipal Council of Tuesday, October tenth, two thousand twenty-three at seven P M will be conducted in a virtual format with public access through means of communication such as YouTube, channel thirty-two, and channel seventy-seven. The public may also participate in the public portion of the meeting by calling in one, dialing nine seven three, three two one, one five seven nine, and enter the meeting ID number eight three two six. Press one to listen to the meeting. Press star three. Watch the live stream on colon, W W W colon YouTube dot com backslash C backslash City of Patterson, NJ City Hall backslash live. Watch live TV on optimum channel number seventy-seven, Verizon channel number thirty-two. Again, I'll repeat, for the public to be a part of the meeting, they can dial in at nine seven three, three two one, one five seven nine, and enter the meeting ID, which is eight three two six. Press one to listen to the meeting and press star three to be added to the speaker key. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, thank you, and Councilwoman Mims. Thank you for the powerful prayer. Councilwoman Mims?
Just quickly, my apologies to the public. I cannot forget our brothers and sisters in Palestine. We are praying for you. We stand in solidarity with you. And Council President, I just wanted the point of privilege to mention our brothers and sisters in Palestine. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mims. Um, and also to our viewing public, if you wish to participate on our public portion, you hear the phone number, nine seven three, three twenty-one, one five seven nine, ID number eighty-three twenty-six. So you could log in and you will be on the waiting room until we'll start a public portion. So let's do payment of bill, Councilwoman Davila.
Council President.
Thank you very much, uh, Council President.
Right after payment of bill, Councilman Velez.
Okay, uh. The bills list, the summary of disbursements are for two million, three hundred and nineteen dollars and three hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty-six cents. This week, there was no payroll. Um, and the majority of the payments went Medicare. Somebody has their, their, um, there's a lot of feedback. Someone has their mic. Oh.
I believe it's Councilman Jackson.
Once, once again. I'm hearing really bad feedback. So, once again, the, uh, majority of the payments went to Medicare, Social Security, and a payment to Covanta. Um, my recommendation is for payment of bills for two hundred, I mean, two million, three hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty-six cents.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Davila. Uh, second by Councilman Velez. Discussion, Councilwoman Mims?
So I have a question, and I know, um, our director is on, but to director CFO, and then I have a recommendation. When I went through the payment of bills, there are about, um, I believe twenty-two payments for, uh, porta johns or the Johnny on the spots. And it equates to, uh, a little over seven thousand dollars, which doesn't seem a lot. I'm trying to identify, uh, why do we use them? Like, they're variations of payments. They, they range from a hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty cents. And then there is a payment for six fifty-four. So I'm trying to identify what was it used for? Was it in addition to what we have? And then after that question, I just have a recommendation because we have our, uh, porta johns that we utilize currently, and we need to invest in getting more. Uh, they've been around for a long time. Some of them have odors and they do clean them. But over time, it, we get the wear and tear, and it's not fair to the community. So I'm just trying to identify, number one, uh, this total, what was it for? Because I don't, you know, it, it looks like we rented some, uh, about twenty-two of them. And then secondly, if we can look into or, um, bring forth something to, uh, the finance committee to identify what it will cost for us to get some new ones in our community, especially as we're revitalizing the parks.
Sure. Point, point. Well taken. Uh, Councilwoman Mims, I have the Director Billy Rodriguez on the, on the, on, on the Zoom, and also Javier. Uh, Madam BA, who can answer that question, uh, from Councilwoman Mims? You have to unmute yourself.
Black, uh, we did. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, Billy, Director. Good afternoon.
All right, uh, we use it for all sorts of events. Uh, that was probably, I don't have the bills list in front of me. That's probably for the, uh, the fourth festival when we rented the, uh, the, uh, the, the porta johns. There's different ones. There's the standards. That's the hundred and fifty something dollars. Then there's the, uh, handicap accessible ones that we also all rent.
Okay, uh.
Council President?
Uh, thank you. I have Councilman Velez, and that right, we go with you, Councilwoman Davila, right after Councilman Velez. Councilman Velez?
Yeah, Council President, um, my, my, my question is not related to this item. I, I will do it later on after the payment goes.
Perfect. No problem. Councilwoman Davila?
Mine is actually related, uh, so a, along with what Councilwoman is asking, um, I have gotten a few people to complain, um, about, you know, the children going into these, um, not well-kept, uh, johnnies. So probably my question would be, I'd like a list to see where each one of those johnnies are and how many in total throughout the city that we use, you know, throughout.
Not a problem. The regular, the regular, the regular basis that we use all year round?
Yes.
Yes, Council President. Also.
Thank you, Councilman Khalid.
I would like to know also how often they replace them. There should be a timetable.
They get cleaned three times a week. They're supposed to be cleaned three times a week.
I'm pretty sure they are not cleaned three times a week because I have seen the ones on Pennington Park, so just.
We definitely had some issues with some cleaning and stuff that we, uh, we put the company on notice about. Um, it's a little bit more rough than past years, but, um, we'll definitely address it.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you, Councilman Khalid. Thank you, Councilwoman Mims and Councilman Davila. The right to stay on top of that. Yes, there's been a lot of complaint about the condition of those portable bathroom, you know, around the park. Roll call on payment of bill?
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call and payment of bills in the amount of two million, three hundred nineteen thousand, five hundred fifty-one dollars, forty-six cents. Councilwoman Davila?
Yes.
Councilman Colleague?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Councilman. Can we, Councilwoman Mims?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Odin? Councilman Velez?
Uh, taking notice, all my colleagues spoke about the porta johns. It's really important that they kept maintaining it and, uh, and put it in a place that is not, uh, too, too close to the entrance of the fields. Uh, when they don't give maintenance, uh, that odor comes out, and people are complaining of that, too. So saying that, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. President? Mr. President?
Just, just a second, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, um, CFO.
If, uh, Councilwoman, he's dressed in red, too.
You're in the flow, CFO.
If I may, um, I know Council President is, is doing something, but Madam Clerk, this is directed to you. Um, just make sure, because there are two, uh, members who are not physically here to sign the bills, so Councilman Colleague and Councilman Velez, uh, stop by tomorrow to sign the payment of bills.
Okay, thank you.
And Madam Clerk, uh, now that, before the president comes in, I received a text that is about fifteen, twelve peoples outside wanting to come in. Uh, are there signs out posted that the meeting is virtual?
Yes, mister. Uh, yes, Councilman Velez, the signs were posted again today. They were posted since last week. No one is allowed in the building. It's a virtual meeting.
Thank, thank you. Thank you, Madam BA. I'm sorry, Council Callie, and I'm sorry, uh, to our constituents for the way. Uh, yes, I was addressing that matter. Uh, let the record reflect. Let me reiterate that we do in a virtual meeting. City Hall is closed for the public today. If you wish to participate on the public portion, we give, uh, we give the phone number, which is the nine seven three, three twenty-one, one five seven nine, ID number eighty-two, eighty-three twenty-six. Uh, you could call. You're gonna be on the waiting room, and we, we open the public portion. You will be able to participate. But once again, City Hall is closed for the public. Any council member that wish to come into the building, yes, you could, uh, use your, utilize your office, uh, to do, um, your virtual meeting. There's no problem, but it's not open to the public. Thank you, Madam Clerk. My vote is yes on payment of bills.
Thank you, Mr. President. The votes are five yeses, four absences. Payment of bills in the amount of two million, three hundred nineteen thousand, five hundred fifty-one dollars, forty-six cents is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can we do the consent agenda, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. The items listed under the consent agenda are numbered seven through eighteen. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by the request of any council member, and if so removed, will be treated as a separate matter.
Go move.
Move.
Moved by Councilwoman Davila, second by Councilman Velez and Councilwoman Mims. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on the consent agenda?
Roll call for approval of the consent agenda. Councilwoman Davila?
Yes.
Con, Councilwoman Mims?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Velez?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
She had it all mixed up. Councilman Colleague?
Yes, yes, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
The votes are five yeses, four absences. The consent agenda is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, let's do the non-consent agenda. Let's start with item number nineteen on the agenda.
Just a moment. Item number nineteen is a resolution authorizing an award of contract to ABM Building Solutions LLC to provide energy savings plan through an energy savings improvement program for the city of Patterson. RFP twenty twenty-two dash three, three nine is administration resolution twenty-three colon six two seven.
Go move.
Again.
Moved by Councilwoman Davila and second by Councilman Velez and Councilwoman Mims.
Discussion.
Uh, discussion, Councilwoman Mims?
Yes, um, to our Madam BA, can you just give a brief overview to the community about what this, uh, pertains to this item for the energy savings improvement plan?
Jennifer, you're giving the wrong sheet. This is the only one that fits this.
Madam BA, uh, she have to unmute herself.
Madam Clerk, you, you need to mute yourself.
Councilwoman Mims, the question was to Madam BA, correct?
Yes, or anyone that can answer from the administration.
Can you guys hear me now?
Not perfect, Madam BA. We could hear you then.
Um, so, yes, and I'm not sure if there is someone waiting to come in. We do have, um, our partner from Sustainable Jersey who was gonna join on the Zoom, and I don't know if she's, um, somewhere and, uh, going to be joining. But in essence, what we did is we're participating in a statewide program, um, that's this energy savings improvement program um, that we are going to be using energy audits that we did as a first phase of a sustainability program to then move forward and do improvements in all of our city buildings that will, in the long term, by making energy efficiency improvements, long term, it will lower our energy bills. Um, so it's, it's, this is the company that we would be working with that the larger, they would be doing all the improvements to the buildings. And so they are working, um, you know, to, to install, um, lighting that's more energy efficient or, you know, kind of plumbing fixtures or boilers and, and the like. And there's a whole spectrum of items that we were able to choose from as we had companies bid to do this work. And so it was this company that we thought had the most realistic bid. Um, it wasn't, we're not awarding them a contract for a certain, a cost amount. We're awarding the project to them. And then we're gonna work with them, um, to, they, they're gonna do a higher level audit, energy audits on all of our buildings. And then we're, they're gonna propose to us the final plan that we then essentially will, um, have, be able to bond for these improvements and make all the improvements upfront. And then we pay down the, the funding source. We pay down the bond with our energy savings every year. And so it's something that we're, the city of, of Patterson is really anticipating probably about um, half a million dollars in energy savings annually because we're taking these steps. And this is something that is a, a program administered through the state of New Jersey, encouraging, again, all, all cities to, um, to take, uh, to take them up on this opportunity to really make the type of improvements that long term save taxpayers money.
So, Council President, just, uh, wait. So I just have some recommendations on this award because I think it's a great idea anytime we're looking to save costs. But there are some things that I think should be added. One, as I could always say, there should be a, um, a, an attachment for performance evaluation review, um, so that we're evaluating, um, the work that they're doing so we can identify if we are looking to renew at a later date, whether we should do it or not based on the work and the performance. Uh, number two, uh, we should be, uh, there should be a request in it for a project manager to oversee this particular work. Uh, a feasibility study should be included in this particular contract and a cost benefit analysis. So, uh, the performance evaluation review, I repeat again, project management, feasibility study, and the cost benefit analysis. So we can just ensure in that work as, you know, I, I think it's great, Sustainable, uh, Jersey, they do a great job across the state. Um, and they do this in other municipalities. I wanted to just make sure that we get the best bang for our buck in Patterson that other municipalities get. This work, they do it already. I just want to make sure it's included in Patterson's, um, award contract. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mims. Point, well taken. Uh, and, and also, Madam BA, you mentioned that there's no cost involved on this. So we, there's an award conscious to ABM, but there's no cost involved of this evaluation. Can you just elaborate a little bit more on that?
Yes, so the, the proposals that are put forward by companies who do this work, um, they have to guarantee that the city that they're working with will actually see a certain level of savings. Um, and so I know, um, there is Tracy Woods from Sustainable Jersey just emailed and said that she is, um, in the queue. She's in the call queue. I don't know if she's able to be identified or if she's just on the phone separately, if, if Ryan or his team might be able to figure that out. Um, but yes, this, this program really pretty much guarantees that the city will, will see savings. So it's a multi.
Sure. How they will get paid, uh, how they, they will be compensated, uh, for the job that they will be performing?
Yes, so the, so it all comes part of, you know, their costs will be built into the renovation costs that the city will take up, but we will see so much in savings from the energy improvements. So, for example, lighting fixtures are the biggest area where, um, we really can, it, it doesn't cost a lot of money for the city to make these improvements. And then, but we will save so much in our, our bills, our monthly bills from, you know, P S E and G and, and the like. So, um, that's how their costs are sort of built into the overall program. And again, we will see that, especially after they do this high-level investment-grade audit. And again, all of these programs are under kind of regulation from the state of New Jersey. And so every single company that's operating in this field, and there's a handful of them that will operate throughout the state of New Jersey. ABM, who we're awarding the contract to, has also done this exact same project for the county of Pasay. So they're familiar with us up here, with our style of buildings in the city of Patterson, with the age of the buildings and the like. Um, so their proposal really made a lot of sense. Um, and we'll be seeing, again, that once they do the high-level audit is when we'll really have the understanding of like, okay, how are we gonna pay for this as a city? Um, there'll be particular funding opportunities, like the, a particular bond that we'll be able to do, um, for these type of projects.
Thank you, Madam BA. Uh, council member, if there's no other question, roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number nineteen?
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call on item number nineteen for approval. Councilwoman Davila?
Yes.
Councilman Colleague?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
As long as the points are taken into consideration, I'm okay with moving this forward. But let's just make sure that we're streamlined and we get best practices that will model in other municipalities in the state of New Jersey. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Okay, Doctor Mims. Councilman Odin? Councilman Velez?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, lighting, it's, it's a big issue. It's a big problem in our community. I'm looking forward to see the change with that new company. And let's keep in mind the project manager that will say recommendation for Councilwoman Mims because we do need it in those new projects. What I've been saying, my vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. The votes are five yeses, four absences. Item number nineteen is hereby adopted.
Council President?
Councilwoman Davila?
Just quickly, I just want you to let you know, I know Council, uh, Madam Clerk keeps calling Councilman Odin. He is not in the office, but his laptop is there, but he's not in the building.
Oh, thank you for clarifying because I know his name popped up, so I thought he was there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, um, Davila. Madam Clerk, item number twenty?
Yes, Mr. President. Item number twenty is a resolution honoring Dennis Rowland as part of the City of Patterson's twenty twenty-three Observance of Hispanic Heritage Month. It's sponsored by Mayor Andres Sayer. It's the City Council Resolution twenty-three colon six two eight.
Go move.
Again.
All right, moved by Councilwoman Davila, second by Councilwoman Mims. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number.
Council President, I did move it, too.
I also, is also moved by Councilman Velez, Madam Clerk, uh, roll call on item number twenty?
Roll call on item number twenty for approval. Councilwoman Davila?
Uh, it gives me great pleasure, um, to see, um, Dennis's name, you know, as this year's honoree for the mayor for Hispanic Heritage Month. Um, you know, this is an individual who I've known for many years. I met him working with Maria Magda, uh, Councilwoman Maria Magda back then, the director of the Hispanic Center, and now working with us for over twenty years. Um, many a times, we don't acknowledge our employees as much as we should, and I think this is well deserved. There's so much more that I can say, um, but I just want to say, congratulations, Dennis Rowland. You make me proud, and you make the city of Patterson proud. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davila. Councilman Colleague?
This recognition is very well deserved. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Mims?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So I have to say it to Dennis in the best way I know. May the work you've done speak for you. This speaks volumes of all the work you've done tirelessly. You know, I love you and your amazing wife. Right, Councilwoman Davila? We share the same sentiments. Uh, this is well deserved, and, uh, we'll get a dance on together, maybe a little shout, too. My, my, uh, vote is. My, my vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Dr. Mims. Councilman Velez.
Well, Dennis Rowland, Dennis Rowland. I met you early 89, great commission church member. In that time, he was a youth. He used to play and still play a great trumpet. Those that don't know, he really played trumpet and, and not by ear. He's real professional, and also he's real charismatic. A man of God, that's the most important thing. Him and his family gave a lot to the community while he was like Councilwoman Davila say by the Hispanic Multiple Post Center from Maria Magda in the Fifth Ward. And I always say, Dennis, prosper in everything as you prosper front and side. So God bless you and well deserved. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman Velez. Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Dennis, congratulations, well deserved. You are an amazing human being, and you have done such a great job in the city of Patterson. We love you, we respect you, and I'm looking forward to see you on Friday to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. The votes are five yeses for absences. Item number 20 is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number 21, Madam Clerk.
Item number 21 is a resolution honoring Zoila Es Casanova as part of the City of Patterson's 2023 Observance of Hispanic Heritage Month. It's sponsored by Council President Alex Mendez. It's a city council resolution 23:629.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Mendez, second by Councilwoman Davila and Councilwoman Mims. Roll call, Madam Clerk, and Councilwoman Velez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would you like me to go with the roll call now, sir?
Yes, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Roll call on item number 21 for approval, Councilwoman Davila.
Surrogate judge, you make us very proud. Thank you for all that you've been doing throughout our county as our surrogate. I'm looking forward to celebrating with you this recognition. You deserve this and so much more. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davila. Councilman Kalik.
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Mims.
I agree with what was stated by Councilwoman Davila, but I do have to say you are a woman of your word. There were some promises that you made when you ran about making your rounds through the community and doing things that were not done in the past, and you stood true to that. I will always respect that about you and so many other things that you do. Surrogate Zoila Casanova, you are the best. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Dr. Mims. Councilman Velez.
Yes, we honor in honorable Zoila Casanova. Council President, the word honorable should be there. She gave a lot to this community, especially for those that need in that surrogate court. She is outset for everyone out there. She had done a great job. And I know she went to difficult moment with her leg, but that never stopped her to work towards the community. So my congratulation for her for this honorary. Thank you, Council President, for choosing her to be honorary. Saying that, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman Velez, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, Councilwoman Velez. Yes, let's add the honorable surrogate, our judge, Zoila Casanova, on that resolution. And, and it was a great honor for me to choose her because as your council member mentioned before, she never gave up, even though she was, you know, going through a difficult situation where her leg, she always was visible, she always been visible in the community. She always been there, available and accessible to the people. And I have so much respect for elected official people in power that serve the community, and she's one of them. Looking forward to celebrate with her on Friday. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. The votes are five yeses for absences. Item number 21 is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number 22.
Item number 22 is a resolution honoring George Guzman Jr. as part of the City of Patterson's 2023 Observance of Hispanic Heritage Month. It's sponsored by Councilman Luis Velez. It's a city council resolution 23:630.
Second.
Second. Moved by Councilwoman Velez, second by Councilwoman Davila, Councilwoman Mims, and Councilwoman Mendez. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number 22.
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call on item number 22 for approval, Councilwoman Davila.
So this young man really makes Patterson very proud. And although he does not live in the city of Patterson, he's in our neighboring town. He was just sworn in, I'd say about a week and a half ago as the new deputy chief in the Borough of Heldon. So I want to congratulate him because all of his family is still in Patterson. He still has roots and ties to Patterson, and he makes us proud. He's a graduate of our Patterson Public Schools, and he just makes us very proud. So congratulations, Deputy Chief Guzman. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Kalik.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Mims.
Brother, when you get to watch this, I want you to hear the, all of the words. But one, you're always there, but I needed something yesterday. And I just honor you and your lovely wife. You're on vacation in Jamaica, and you answered the phone and got the answers for me. I disrespect you. You get it done, you make it happen. You are an ex-official Pattersonian for life, and we love you. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Dr. Mims. Councilman Velez.
To my friend and brother, Deputy Chief George Guzman Jr., Council President and Madam Clerk, I would like to add Deputy Chief title on it, George Guzman. I know he was in the middle of his, we're drafted in the middle of that appointment. But I would like to highlight is a Deputy Chief from Heldon Police. And he had done a lot, not only in the, as a police officer, as a Deputy Chief, Sergeant, Captain, and all the titles, also as a board member of the school district in Heldon. So congratulations on the work that he had done, not only for his city, his borough, for Patterson too, his family still live here in the Fifth Ward. So my congratulations to all of them, especially to his wife and him as it is. So my vote is yes, honers.
Thank you, Councilman Velez. Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. George Guzman, my man in 2000, a role model in our community. He's really is a role model for our youth, for our community, well involved. You know, he's in Heldon for Patterson, love him, and congratulations. Now he's a Deputy Chief of our neighboring city. And council members, if you feel that you have to add any new title to your honorary, I definitely agree. That's a, that's a very good idea. So with that being said, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The votes are five yeses for absences. Item number 22 is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number 23.
Item number 23 is resolution honoring Norma Feliciano as part of the City of Patterson's 2023 Observance of Hispanic Heritage Month. It's sponsored by Councilman Michael Jackson. It's a city council resolution 23:631.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Davila, second by Councilwoman Velez. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number 23.
Council President, I moved it.
Councilwoman Mims.
I moved it as well, Council President.
Yes, so it was moved by Councilwoman Davila and Councilwoman Mims, and second by Councilwoman Velez, and I would, I would also like to second that by Councilwoman Mendez as well. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call on item number 23 for approval, Councilwoman Davila.
So with respect, you know, to Councilman Jackson and his appointment, how beautiful, beautiful it is to, to be able to honor your mother in life. And I say that from the heart. In addition to that, all of her work that she's done, working within our Board of Health Department, but all the other departments as well that she's worked, and in New York as well as, as a registered nurse. Thank you for all that you did and that you continue to do during COVID. And, you know, who better than to honor someone that has given so much to this community, our city of Patterson? My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davila. Councilman Kalik.
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Mims.
To a lady that has worked tirelessly for our community, not just during COVID, but for decades. We appreciate you. We respect the work that you do. You deserve this honor. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Dr. Mims. Councilman Velez.
Agree with all the statement of my colleagues. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman Velez. Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, before my vote, if Councilman Jackson would join us later, I would, I wouldn't mind to go back to this, 20, item 23, to add him as a person, as a council member, as a councilman that moved this idol, since this is his honorary and especially his mother. So once again, congratulations to Norma Feliciano. She worked with our health department, and she worked really hard during COVID. She was out there serving our community. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. The votes are five yeses for absences. Item number 23 is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number 24.
Item number 24 is a resolution honoring Maria del Pilar Rivas as part of the City of Patterson's 2023 Observance of Hispanic Heritage Month. It's sponsored by Councilwoman Ruby N. Cotton. It's a city council resolution 23:632.
Move.
Moved by Councilman, the Councilwoman Davila and Councilwoman Velez, and second by Councilwoman Mims. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number 24.
Roll call on item number 24 for approval, Councilwoman Davila.
So I have a lot to say about, I'm sorry, a lot to say about our Deputy Mayor, Maria del Pilar Rivas. I've known her for many, many years, and it is no surprise to anyone. We've, we've had good moments and we have not had so great moments. But I have to say, it is not how you start, but it's how you end. We've been working very closely in the community. She's a proud Peruvian who's doing a lot of great things within the community. She just does not serve Peruvians, but just overall, anyone that needs her assistance. So, you know, Councilwoman Cotton, I know you're not here. Thank you very much for acknowledging and recognizing Maria del Pilar Rivas. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Kalik.
Congratulations, Ms. Rivas. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Mims.
So to Councilwoman Cotton, you made a great choice. I remember meeting Maria Pilar Rivas at her, where she had her restaurant or bakery some years ago, and we've been friends ever since. I had an opportunity where she served as one of my legislative aides, and now she is one of the deputy mayors of the city of Patterson. I am so grateful to call her friend. She's been my seamstress, she's been my daughter's seamstress, and she does amazing things. I love you for your love, your consistency, and your heart of gold. Continue doing great work, and you will always receive the blessings. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Dr. Mims. Councilman Velez.
Maria del Pilar Rivas, Deputy Mayor. Thank you for being my friend. You've always been there for the entire community when it comes up to relief. You was there for the Dominican community, for the Puerto Rican community, and those relief that we created in Patterson to help the, the people. Keep on doing the great work that you've been doing for your community in Peru with those little kids, and those people are needed out there. I just reminded that she has an event coming up to raise funds for those little kids. And que viva, listen, el Perú. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman Velez. Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Congratulations to our Deputy Mayor, Maria del Pilar Rivas. Looking forward to celebrate on Friday. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Council President, before we call the vote, can we just make sure we add Deputy Mayor to that resolution?
Thank you, so, thank you so very much, Councilwoman Mims. Yes, and I mentioned that before, Madam Clerk, right after the meeting, if any council member feel that we have to include any additional title, let's make sure that we add it, the way the resolution will come out with their acting title. So yes, point well taken, Councilwoman Mims. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. The votes are five yeses for absences. Item number 24 is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number 25.
Item number 25 is a resolution honoring Anna Rosio Castillo as part of the City of Patterson's 2023 Observance of Hispanic Heritage Month. It's sponsored by Councilwoman Maritza Davila. It's a city council resolution 23:633.
So.
Moved by Councilwoman Davila, second by Councilwoman Velez. Anybody else? All right, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Second.
And second also by Councilwoman Mims. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number 25.
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call on item number 25 for approval, Councilwoman Davila.
So there is so much that I can say, which I'm not going to say today. I'm going to leave some for Friday celebration about this young lady, Anna Rosia Castillo from Medo. The fact that you've come to us in short time, anyone that knows that I've been here for the last 10 years, I like to acknowledge city employees. City employees that have been part of the city for years that have never been recognized. You have a short time here, but what you've done in your journey, I mean, you make me proud as a proud Peruvian, Puerto Rican, American that I am, just to read about you, just to know that you are a Bloomberg Fellow scholar, that you are here with Patterson now, and that you chose Patterson, knowing that this right here is what I would say the hub of Peruvians. I would say the state and nationally, I think I could say that. But in addition to that, there's so much more that I learned about you. And as someone that's been in higher education now for 30 years and who served and who was an instrument to so many to issue I-20s to bring them from Peru and from other places with a student visa means a lot. So there's so much more that we can say. I love what New Jersey 12 did yesterday. Beautiful, beautiful piece on you. I'm looking forward to the continued support and work that you give the city as well as anything that you need from me. You make me proud. Congratulations. Your story is to tell, and we're going to continue telling it. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davila. Councilman Kalik.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is she participating in this meeting?
Yes, she's on the meeting, sir.
I, I, I just, I just noticed, congratulations, and my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman Kalik. Councilwoman Mims.
There's a quote that says, when one woman stands up, she stands up for all other women that can never stand. Continue to be the voice for the voiceless. Continue to stand in the gap for women and make yourself the role model and the leader that people look up to and want to exemplify. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Dr. Mims. Councilman Velez.
You just be with me for a minute. I just banged my knee to the desk.
Oh, boy. Are you in the office, Jennifer? Can you help?
Are you okay? Do you need?
Do you need help, sir?
No, I'm okay. I'll hold for a minute.
All right.
Okay, so.
Oh, boy. Councilman Kalik.
I, I, I voted already, but I'm first. Councilwoman Velez, you're right.
Unfortunately, this deck is not the same height that I have in the office. I got long legs. I was getting a cold here.
Councilman, do you need medical attention or no?
No, I'm okay. I just banged my knee. That's a tool.
I have people in the building if you need medical attention.
I am in my, I am in my home office. There's a quote, there's a quote that, that Roberto Clemente just said, when he was alive. Anytime you have an opportunity to make a difference in this world, and you don't, you are wasting your time on earth. And I think Rosio, Anna Rosio, you are a proud immigrant. You have made us proud. You have made the difference. And I wish this is being heard all the way around the country. When they want to put us borders, when they want to block us to come here and make the difference, you have proof that we come here to make the difference, and you are part of that. Congratulations, and bring that grants, bring that money to the city. We need it. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman Velez. Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This is, this was really a great pick, Councilwoman Davila. Congratulations, and also congratulations to Anna Rosio Castillo. She really make us proud, and we have her right here in the city of Patterson. Would also, congratulations. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. The votes are five yeses for absences. Item number 25 is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number 26.
Item number 26 is a resolution honoring Harry Savios as part of the City of Patterson's 2023 Observance of Hispanic Heritage Month. It's sponsored by Councilwoman Dr. Lysa Mims. It's a city council resolution 23:634.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Dr. Lysa Mims, second by Councilwoman Davila. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
And Velez.
And Velez, and Councilwoman Velez. I'm sorry, Councilman. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Roll call on item number 26 for adoption, Councilwoman Davila.
Harry, thank you. Thank you for all the years of service to the city of Patterson. Your passion, your- Thank you. Thank you for all the years of service to the City of Patterson. Your passion, your kindness, your humbleness. Everything about you. You're the epitome of what a great purchasing agent should be. No, but with that said, it's not just, you're a public servant. We appreciate you. I wish I could do so much more for you. I will continue to stand by you. Right, Madam VA? No, but with that said, congratulations, Harry. My vote is yes.
Thank you, um, Councilwoman Davila. Councilman Kalik.
We, we appreciate your service, Harry. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman Kalik. Councilwoman Mims.
So I'll have a long speech on Friday, but congra- excuse me, congratulations to my dear friend. We served together on the planning board. You are a sounding board and you were one of the first people to nominate me to serve in the leadership capacity on that board. I love and appreciate you. Thank you for always helping and providing a lot of information to ensure that we operate in the, uh, ethics that are required to be uh, an effective legislator in this city. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Dr. Mims. Councilman Vales. You're muted, Councilman.
I noticed. I just was practicing. Harry Savalos, you carry the same name of my brother Harry. He's in Colombia. But one thing I have to say about Harry, Harry, thank you. Thank you for passing that knowledge that you have in your office to me. To me, because when I have questions, I go to you, you tell me the process and I, I learn a lot. So Harry Savalo, keep on doing a great job that you're doing and thank you for filling out, filling the position of BA when the BA is out there. She should be grateful, but he, he knows a lot. So my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman Vales, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Harry Savio, he's the director of a purchasing department in the City of Patterson. He's been with us twenty-eight years. It's amazing. Uh, we all know how difficult is our city, but he's been with us for the twenty-eight years and I'm looking forward to see him for more years to come. Congratulations. We're looking forward to celebrate with you. Uh, great pick, Councilwoman Mims. Uh, my vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. The votes are five yeses, four absences. Item number twenty-six is hereby adopted.
Item number twenty-seven, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President. Item number twenty-seven is a resolution honoring William Rodriguez as part of the City of Patterson's twenty twenty-three Observance of Hispanic Heritage Month. It's sponsored by Councilman M. D. Forid Urdin. It's a city council resolution twenty-three colon six three five.
So move.
Mr. President.
So move it to President.
Council President.
So move, Mr. President.
We all move it.
I'm sorry, I have Ryan.
I moved, I moved it first.
It was moved by Councilwoman Davila and Councilman Vales, if I'm not mistaken, second by Councilwoman Mims. Uh, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Also, Council President, add Urdin on it, you know, it would be nice.
You're not here, you can't.
He's not in the meeting.
No.
Oh, okay.
We, we gotta ask for the permission of the council member. So it is moved by Councilwoman Davila, Councilman Vales, and second by Councilwoman Mims. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item twenty-seven?
Yes, Mr. President. Roll call on item number twenty-seven for approval, Councilwoman Davila.
So before I vote, I just want to make sure, you know, it's my understanding, uh, you can only be part of, you know, through a sheet if you're presently to vote on something. You can't be added like you voted on something if you're not here. And respectfully, I'm just saying that and I moved it because I'm sitting here and he's not here. Um, in addition, and this is in no way at all, so Director, I'm looking at you right now. Um, we've always liked to honor our employees, all right? But we also say, let's give an opportunity for someone else. And I know you've been a past honoree and I think that, you know what, this is deserved, all right? Once again. Um, and so I just wanted.
Not a honoree.
Huh?
Not a main, not a real, it wasn't.
All right, but listen, we're happy you're Patterson. Um, you are of Hispanic descent. And I think that, you know what, again, us recognizing our city employees, I mean, I wish that we could do something even bigger, right? Um, but with that said, there's so much more that I can say about you. I just want to say thank you. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Kalik.
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk. There's nothing, there's nothing to say about the director.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Mims.
So I take the roast mic or should I be on the nice night? Um, so, uh, to Director, so I know you're the Director of Public Works, but I consider you family. That's been my, um, salutation to you from the very beginning of working here because you make um, this job easy for, for me and for all of us. When it comes to getting the work done, getting down in the trenches and getting dirty, you, you and your department make it happen every single day. Kudos to you. Well deserved. You're Patterson. You came through the ranks and got where you are and that's what it's about. When people see that someone that they work with can get to where you are, it allows them to want to move up as well. So family, we family for life, no matter what happens. But on tonight, I want to say congratulations. My vote is absolutely there. Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Mims. Councilman Vales.
Director Billy Rodriguez, uh, thank you for, um, one, being my friend. Second, listening to all of us when it comes up to, uh, the quality of life and, uh, the beautify the city. You're always there. Um, I don't have no complaint. The only complaint I have is that, oh, no. But let me say this, uh, I got good memories with you. Every time we go to Atlanta City, we, we got a good time. You like that? But hey, that's good. And God bless you, you and your family. I know you take a lot of time out of your family to dedicate to the city. Um, I, I, I hope a lot of people will really appreciate the work that you've been doing uh, with the limited resources that the city have for this department. You've been representing your, your membership uh, of DPW. You guys are a team, a team of, of people that love Patterson and want to see uh, Patterson move forward, especially with all this, uh, uh, renovating fields and everything that you have done, you have listened to us. Uh, thank you for everything and, uh, keep on the great job. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman Vales, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. On item twenty-seven, we honoring William Rodriguez, Billy, our Director of DPW uh, for the Hispanic Heritage Month. Billy, congratulations. One of the things that I have to respect about you is that the attitude that you uh, coming to work every single day to address all the problem, you, you, you are the head of one of the most difficult department at DPW. And I'm excited to see, uh, we definitely have to recognize our employees and more staff, employees from DPW should be recognized. You do an outstanding job. You come every morning with a positive attitude. You get our call and you get the job done, which is important. Uh, you get the job done for the community of the city. Uh, so we're not perfect yet, but we moving in the right direction. We're looking forward to celebrate with you, Billy. Congratulations. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. The votes are five yeses, four absences. Item number twenty-seven is hereby adopted.
Uh, thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, I know Councilman Ding is still on the Zoom. If he come back before the end of the meeting, we could come back to his item and make sure we could add him, uh, because this is, uh, his honoree. Uh, item twenty-eight, Madam Clerk?
Item number twenty-eight is a resolution honoring Rafael Ortiz as part of the City of Patterson's twenty twenty-three Observance of Hispanic Heritage Month. It's sponsored by Councilman Shaheen Kalik. It's a city council resolution twenty-three colon six three six.
Second.
Move, move by Council, Councilman Kalik, second by Councilwoman Mims and Councilwoman Davila.
No, it was, it was me first.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I have to say, second by Councilwoman Davila and, and Councilwoman Mims.
That's the way I have it, Council President.
Excuse me, excuse me, my voice is there.
And, and add Councilman Vales also as well. All right, so that's great support. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number twenty-eight?
Roll call on item number twenty-eight for adoption, Councilwoman Davila.
So the reason why I moved quickly to, um, uh, second, Councilwoman Kalik's honoree. Uh, he's someone that if, and, and I think, I don't think that there's anyone here that does not know him. Quique Printing, all right? Whenever there's anything that you need and you need a quick job, all right? This young man is always there to stay present at whatever, whatever day, whatever time. In addition, for the past, um, Councilman Kalik, I'd say, but past five years or so. Um, we've been working very closely with him in sponsoring, um, National Night Out. Um, there's so much more again that I could say about him, but today's not the day for that. I just want to say Quique, congratulations. I know that you're going through a lot, you know, in terms of family, but how nice to be able to be part of honoring you um, on for Hispanic Heritage. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davila. Councilman Kalik.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, Rafael Ortiz, everyone knows him as Quique. Uh, he's a small business owner in City of Patterson.
No, no, it's, it's.
He's a community person. This is what we need. He's in the community every single day. You drive by Union Ave or, or Edmuneve, you will see him out there. Um, and I have done many event with him. He's one of the sponsor, National Night Out. Also, we planning on, um, October thirty-first, Halloween night, we, we planning an event with him as well. This is very well deserved. He live in the community. I mean, he's in the second ward twenty-four seven, basically. Um, I'm proud to honor him. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman Kalik. Councilwoman Mims.
So Quique, hey, brother, I want to say this because, and I will say it again Friday. You've printed so many items for me, so I mean, I can't even count. But I will never forget, at the last hour, we had a real big rush for the beautiful black butterfly event with the tutus and the T-shirts. And we, I came, I called you and you said, bring it to me. And we had a special order item and you got it done at the last minute to perfection and you even had your people delivered over to us at the amphitheater. I will never ever forget this, this, us, despite everything you've done, that right there to me spoke volumes. Um, and on behalf of all the women that were in the tutu that day, we will never forget all the work that you do. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Dr. Mims. Councilman Vales.
Just want to clarify the record. Yes, I have done work there, paid, 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 you know, that's good. I do. But Quique, I love you. Quique knows every time you call him, he don't hesitate. Listen, send it over, send it over, send it over. And no matter what the time is, no matter what it is, he detail, take the time of his family to, to, as Councilwoman Mims says, uh, Davila and all of them, uh, he take the time of his family to make sure that we look good in, in every, every product that we, uh, solicitate from him. So Quique, uh, keep on doing a great job. Um, I remember when you started Union Avenue and now you have your own business in the back. Um, and that's a blessing. Um, remember the word Quique. Printing is not advertising, is a kudo. My vote is yes. Congratulations.
Thank you, Councilman Vales, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, Quique, congratulations. Uh, I don't know if he, if Councilman Kalik agreed to add Quique Printing on the resolution because quite honestly, I was looking for Rafael Ortiz. I'm like, oh, but who's Rafael Ortiz? And it was hard for me to, to identify who Rafael Ortiz. And when I hear Quique, nobody knows Rafael Ortiz, but the whole city, the whole state of New Jersey know Quique Printing. So if you agree, Councilman Kalik, it would be a good idea to add Quique Printing on the rest. So my vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. The votes are five yeses, four absences. Item number twenty-eight is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number twenty-nine?
Item number twenty-nine is a resolution honoring Anaí Suriel as part of the City of Patterson's twenty twenty-three Observance of Hispanic Heritage Month. It's sponsored by Councilman Ala Al Abdalaziz. It's a city council resolution twenty-three colon six three seven.
So move.
Again.
Move by Councilwoman Davila, second by Councilman Vales and Councilwoman Mims. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number twenty, twenty-nine?
Roll call on item number twenty-nine for adoption, Councilwoman Davila.
Officer Anaí Suriel, sixth ward resident.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for all of the work that you do in the City of Patterson. I know that it's trying times in the department. Um, but I, I know that you work day in, day out without looking. Um, you know, who you're serving, you're serving all in the City of Patterson and especially in the sixth ward. Um, I know that, uh, Councilman Abdalaziz is not able to be here, but I know he'll have some words to share on, um, or hopefully he'll be here on Friday. With that said, congratulations. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davila. Councilman Kalik.
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Mims.
And so there are many jobs that, you know, men and women do and they do them well. But when I see a woman serve as a police officer in the, um, the capacity of protecting and serving when there's so many other things that she can do, that speaks volumes to me. And so I wanted to give, uh, this, this quote for her. Um, because I just think it's just so profound. We have people that don't lead from the back. The ability to learn is the most important quality a leader can have. You do a phenomenal work when people are watching and when they're not. I appreciate all you do. Thank you for keeping Patterson safe. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Dr. Mims. Councilman Vales.
Anaí, uh, you know, I could say a lot from you. I know your mom, uh, you used to be a cooker in one of the restaurant, Trenton Avenue. Y cocina bien, cocina bien. But it's a whereas, uh, at the end here, it says Anaí is a proud Latina and her service and impact in the city is commendable. Gracias por hacer de República Dominicana Patterson. Felicidades, Anaí. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman Vales, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Anaí, we're all proud of you and we'll be celebrating this Friday. All your achievements, well deserved. Uh, thank you, Councilman Abdalaziz, for this great pick. You're not only making the Dominican community proud, but you're making all the Latino and all the residents of the City of Patterson proud with your job and your dedication for this community. Uh, with that being said, my vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. The votes are five yeses, four absences. Item number twenty-nine is hereby adopted.
Uh, thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember, then it's item, item number thirty. Uh, I use, I, I add all of you on this item because as, uh, as we prepare the Hispanic Heritage Month every year, each council member is allowed to have one honoree. But there is a young man that is a superstar, not only in Dominican Republic, but around the world, which is that Rubio Accordeon. So he's here in the United States. He decided to come to Patterson on Friday to be pressing at the Hispanic Heritage Celebration in the City of Patterson. And I add him on the resolution, um, sponsored by myself and the remaining council, council member. I hope you agree. This young kid is a super role model to our, not only, uh, to the entire Latino community for his music and all the youth. Madam Clerk, let's read, read item number thirty.
Council President. Council President.
Councilwoman Davila?
I just want you to mention the latest song that's out there presently that everyone's singing. What's the name of it?
Mariela.
Okay, okay.
Yes, and he gonna sing here. Uh, that's what we hope. So, uh, uh, with that being said, item number thirty, Madam Clerk?
Item number thirty is a resolution honoring Emmanuel Garcia, AKA El Rubio Accordio as part of the City of Patterson's twenty twenty-three Observance of Hispanic Heritage Month. It's sponsored by Council President Alex Mendez and the remaining council members. It's resolution twenty-three colon six three eight.
Second.
Second.
Move by Councilman Mendez, second by Councilwoman Davila and Councilman Dr. Lysa Mims. Uh, roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number, number thirty?
Roll call on item number thirty for adoption, Councilwoman.
And Councilman Vales, second by Councilman Vales as well.
You could include me as well.
And, and, and Councilman, uh, Councilman Kalik, I'm sorry, also as well.
Roll call on item number thirty for adoption, Councilwoman Davila.
Sorry, I was laughing. Um, I'm looking forward to seeing him once again, uh, this Friday. Congratulations. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Kalik.
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Councilman Kalik. Um, Councilwoman Mims.
So there's many things that everyone in this community knows that I absolutely love and one of those things are our youth. Thank you so much, Council President, for this honoree, for our young people, because we can honor a whole bunch of people, but we should never um, leave out our youth and our seniors. So I really look forward to seeing this young man be presented with this honor on Friday. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Dr. Mims. Councilman Vales. Thank you, Dr. Mims. Councilman Belles.
Like everything is, is good. Uh, I don't know if, uh, this is the music that he play. I love it. Hey. Ladies and gentlemen, I, I love that song. I love everything he do. Uh, he just came, they, he just came at night. Now, hold on, where is it? Hold on. Now, now. Now I get stuck here. Listen, uh, if it was, if it was not for the paydays and these times, we don't have fun. Um, once again, he came uh, uh, by visa to promote his music. And he had done more than, wow, like forty shows in different places and had been packed um, and promoting the Dominican uh, typical from Santiago, uh, young kid and, and uh, everybody love him. So congratulations. Um, hopefully other youth and other people as his age follow his career and may succeed for the Dominican Republic. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman Belles, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It is a great honor for me to recognize that Rubio Accordion on the Hispanic Heritage Month Celebration this Friday. It definitely is an inspiration for the youth and as I mentioned before, not only to the Latino community, to the entire community uh, because of what he does and his music. Uh, and he came to the United States and it's incredible. He going around all the different states singing and this Friday, he's gonna be with us here just to uh, get the recognition and to visit the City of Patterson. He's been here in a multiple occasion, a different pride of event. And it's gonna be a great honor for us to have him here. Uh, as you mentioned, Councilwoman Mims, I totally agree with you. We have to support a youth. We have to, uh, uh, recognize the youth and those uh, young men and women that doing a great job out there. We have to recognize they, and make sure that they are, they become the role model for those future generation. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. The votes are five yeses, four absences. Item number thirty is hereby adopted.
Uh, thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to item number thirty-one, Madam Clerk.
Item number thirty-one is a resolution appointing Eva Elrezak as a constable of the City of Patterson. It's sponsored by Councilwoman Dr. Lilisa Mims. It's a City Council Resolution twenty-three colon six three nine.
Second.
Uh, move by Dr. Councilwoman Lilisa Mims and second by Councilwoman Davila and Councilman Belles. Uh, roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number thirty-one.
Roll call on item number thirty-one for adoption, Councilwoman Davila.
So I've known Ms. Reyzak for over twenty-one years. And um, I met her as she was an aide at my son's school and he was little. He was four, five years old. And um, but prior to that, I knew her. Um, but it is when she assisted my son in the schools and she was about the only person that would always come up to me and say, I understand your son. And this is when he was little. Throughout the years, we've kept in touch. We know her passion. And you know, not everyone expresses themselves the same way and that's okay. Uh, but we know that she loves Patterson and Councilwoman uh, Mims, you know, you, you've named her as a constable and I just can't see myself saying no to someone that I know loves our city the way Ms. Eva Reyzak does. So with that said, again, she's another person I could say a lot about. All right, but I just want to say, Eva, congratulations and thank you for always, all of those words of encouragement and those messages that you sent me daily. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman um, Davila. Councilman Kalik.
Congratulations, Ms. Eva Reyzak. This is very well deserved. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman Kalik. Councilwoman Mims.
So to Ms. Reyzak, it's been a long time coming. Um, we spoke on various occasions, probably over a year ago, about making this uh, putting, appointing you as one of our constables. I'm looking forward to the great work that you will do. Your passion speaks volumes for the work that you've done with our youth and the love that you have for our city. Um, I'm looking forward to you being appointed and sworn in. Uh, Madam Clerk, please let me know the day of swearing in so I can be present for that.
I will.
With that being stated, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Dr. Mims. Councilman Belles.
The call is still Commissioner. Many, many years ago, she was a Commissioner, I believe, at Housing, appointed by the Fifth Ward Councilman that time. Unfortunately, she's no longer Commissioner. Every time she comes to me, Councilman, please give me a spot where I could serve. Give me a spot where I could serve. Fortunately, we don't have a lot of spot as councilmen's. But thank you, Councilwoman Mims, to not ignoring her request. I know that she came also to me for be a council, but I don't have no spots. But thank you for giving the opportunity that one aspect of the other she could serve. Her mother live in the Fifth Ward still in Pearl Street. Her father passed away. God have his soul in heaven, you know, was a great friend of mine and she knows that. Uh, Eva, yo te bendiga, thank you for, for everything that you do. Your passion, your passion to see us united, that's one thing. The passion to see us united. One day, you will see that. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman Belles, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Congratulations to Eva as our new constable. Uh, thank you, Councilwoman Mims. Uh, definitely great pick. Eva, she's well known in the City of Patterson. She have done an outstanding job for many years. She's been involved in every area, every aspect, aspect in the community. She, she just try to help and she just wants to serve. And, and that's, that's a great, it's a great opportunity for her to serve as one of our constable. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. The votes are five yeses, four absences. Item number thirty-one is hereby adopted.
Uh, thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number thirty-two.
Item number thirty-two is a resolution authorizing the first option renewal contract with Covanta Sustainable Solutions LLC for the disposal of, disposal of all solid waste types. Option number one, bid number twenty point three one for the Department of Public Works. It's a Public Works Resolution twenty-three colon six four zero.
Come on.
Move by Councilman Belles. Do we have a second? Second by Councilwoman Mims. And anybody else? And Councilwoman Davila. Uh, roll.
I'm sorry, I kept saying second, right? Not realizing that the mic was off.
Exactly. So roll call, Madam Clerk, on item thirty-two.
Roll call on item number thirty-two for adoption, Councilwoman Davila.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Kalik.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Mims.
Uh, just before I vote, I just want to uh, reiterate that this item is a renewal contract. Um, and they're getting eighty-nine dollars and seventy-one cents per tonne. An estimate of seven million and eighty-seven thousand and ninety-nine dollars and fifty cents. That is the estimation of this particular uh, renewal for one year. Um, uh, just a point of recommendation to our BA and to our director um, to again, include the performance evaluation review on these particular items. And possibly, it maybe if we get a two-year, it could be a little bit cheaper. So um, can we look into that in the future? Because I know that this item um, is for seven million dollars. But perhaps there could be some cost savings if we can do a two to three-year contract. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Dr. Mims. Councilman Belles.
My vote is yes, Angus.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. President.
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. The votes are five yeses, four absences. Item number thirty-two is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I, I don't know, thirty-three.
Item number thirty-three is a resolution authorizing the first option renewal contract with Coastal Distribution of Patterson LLC for the disposal of solid waste from the City Yard Facility. Option number two, bid number twenty point three one for the Department of Public Works. It's a Public Works Resolution twenty-three colon six four one.
Come over.
Move by Councilwoman Davila and Councilwoman Mims. Um, second by Councilwoman Mims. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number thirty-three.
Roll call on item number thirty-three for adoption, Councilwoman Davila.
Yes.
Councilman Kalik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims.
So uh, it's the same uh, commentary that was made in item number thirty-two. This item is for a renewal one-year contract. This total is five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty, ninety, hundred and eighty-three dollars and twenty-six cents. Uh, I would like to see a performance evaluation review as well attached to this in this renewal contract. And addition for us to look at extending beyond one year, possibly to do two or three for some cost savings and to be more efficient um, for both of these items. With that being stated, uh, that was from uh, the Madam BA and for our director. With that being stated, Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Dr. Mims. Councilman Belles.
My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. President.
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. The votes are five yeses, four absences. Item number thirty-three is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have a second reading, item number one.
Yes, Mr. President.
Council President.
Yes.
I, I have, I have something that I'd like to ask because I think um, the second reading ordinances, as you are aware, we're gonna open up the, there's public hearings. And um, I wanted to ask to Corporation Council, since items two, three.
Four, five, six.
Five and six, they're all establishing. I know she would have to put them all into the record. But if we can open, they're all the same thing, just that there's so many uh, different addresses that we can open the public hearing for all of those items, but we do get to them.
Mr. President. There.
Uh, yes, uh.
Thank you. So I'll, I'll defer to uh, the clerk on whether or not we can have one public portion for all of these items. Um, legally, uh, I don't see a reason why we cannot, but I defer to the following terms.
Okay. Um, Councilwoman Mims, you, you asked for the floor.
I was gonna ask the same. I was gonna make the same.
Okay, so, so we're gonna wait for, we're gonna wait for the answer, Madam Clerk. Let me just add, councilmembers, that the only, the, our ordinance that we have is number one, which is different than the number two, three, four, five, and six. We have done this before. We have combined it all together. They have one vote. Let's hear from Madam Clerk. And right after that, we're gonna open the public portion. I'm gonna repeat the phone number to the public. If you wants to participate in our public portion, you could call the number nine seven three, three twenty-one, one five seven nine, meeting ID number eighty-three twenty-six. You're gonna be on a waiting room until we open the public portion. So after those um, items, so we're gonna be ready with the public portion, Madam Clerk.
So, Mr. President, just for clarity, are you doing the public portion prior to the public hearing in these items? Because since it's a key um, of callers waiting, I think they were waiting for the public portion and not the public hearing, as um, Ryan was saying. So are you leading into the public portion now or?
You know what, Madam Clerk? So let's do this because we have to open the uh, the public hearing on those items.
Yes.
Uh, and let's open the public portion now. Uh, so let's repeat the phone number and the ID number. So let's get ready for the public portion. And once we close public portion, we will go with the second reading item. And so we will continue um, on the public portion if anybody wish to speak on those items. So let me know when you get the list of how many speaker that we have on the pipeline. I know Ryan, Ryan needs some time for that.
Yeah, he's working. But in the meantime, if you would like to participate in the public portion of the meeting, you may dial nine seven three, three two one, one five seven nine and enter the meeting ID number eight three two six. Press star one to listen to the meeting and press star three to be added to the speaker key. Again, the number to dial in for the public portion is nine seven three, three two one, one five seven nine and enter the meeting ID number eight three two six. Press one, press star one to listen to the meeting, press star three to be added to the speaker key. So far, Mrs., Mr. President, so far, we have five speakers in the key for the public portion.
Excellent. Let's also remind the community that ID number is the signal of number. The signal of number eighty-three twenty-six. Madam Clerk, let's start with the first speaker.
Just a moment, Mr. President. Let me just work with Ryan.
Mr. President, before you start with the first.
Councilman Belles.
Uh, Council President, i- it's good that you clarify. I just saw a disturbing pulse. We are not transmitting the virtual meeting from the chambers. It's totally incorrect. We are, I'm in my house, Davila is in her place, everybody in their place. We don't have quarrel in the chamber. We have a virtual meeting and everybody's in their location. I just want to clarify that.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And I, I, and I'm going to reiterate what I mentioned in the beginning. Let's not, you know, let's not mislead the public. The chamber is closed today. We have our uh, meeting is, is virtual and that's the reason why we're gonna have the public portion through the same process via the phone number. Madam Clerk.
Uh, he's, he's putting the first person on.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So yeah, so councilmember, so uh, to the, to the public in general. Uh, so we mentioned early today that the uh, city hall will be closed. Uh, so uh, if you want to participate, so you have the number, the nine seven three, three twenty-one, one five seven nine, meeting ID number eighty-three twenty-six.
Hello, I think the person is unknown.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is Valerie Freeman.
Yes.
North Ninth, Patterson, New Jersey. I'm calling because um, I just want to know if there is some law that's on the books that restricts the public from coming into the people's house. You all want to claim that this is the people's house and then you make a move like this. My question to all of you, all of you that are sitting there, are you, are, are you really serious? You really thought and felt that you needed to have a virtual meeting about the business of the city and keep the public out of the chambers? You want to say you're in your office and you're having a virtual meeting, but talk about what you're really doing. Like if you want to keep it real, keep it real. This is a bunch of bull. You got things going on in this city, all this killing, all this shooting, and you want to close the people's house, so you call it, the people who voted you all in, you want to close them out. It is not right. I want to know, and I'm going to Oprah, I want to know what law is it that says that it's okay for you to do this? There is no state of the emergency when it really should be. So why, why are we doing this? And I'm not gonna sit on this phone and wait for an answer, because I think that's bull too. You're not afraid for your life. You're not afraid for your life. If that's the case, we should all be afraid for our life out here in these streets. But yet, and still, we're still out here. People still come to the council meeting because they need to be heard. But here it is, now you want to pull this nonsense? And I'm, I'm shocked at you, Alex, because you had people tearing you down and your whole family down, and now you coochie crunch with them. Everything was gravy. Everything was good with your mayor, your best friend. He playing you and you can't even see it, right in front of your face. And Louis Velez, all your antagonizing, the constant antagonizing, antagonizing, and nobody's addressing how you antagonize people constantly. And then when somebody checks you, now you're afraid for your life. Shut your mouth. Shut your mouth. Because when you antagonize and you poke a bear, what you think gonna happen in the woods if you were the bear? And you keep throwing things at him and throwing things at him. What do you think is gonna happen? You think the bear gonna say, oh, okay? No. There's amount of respect that needs to be hea- held with you and everybody in there. So you not, you, I won't allow you to paint a picture, paint a picture that you afraid of your life. That's, that's crying wolf. You want to antagonize and then.
Council President, let the record reflect that you do not, the meeting, that's three, three minutes and they not.
Councilman Belles, we're in the public portion, I understand. Madam Clerk, uh, you, we got the three-minute clock, right?
Yes, and I think that's why the call was disrupted.
Okay. Okay, so, so I think, I, I think that the, the Commissioner, uh, Councilmembers, we are in public portion, but let me, I know she got disconnected, but I know she been listening to the meeting. I'm gonna answer to her, her legal question because it, yes, it's a legal question. Under the public meeting app, every, every year, July first, we vote on the resolution. This is a, this is the resolution. I have the authority as Council President to call for a uh, um, meeting, uh, a Zoom meeting or a um, a virtual meeting at any point in time because on July first, we voted on this legislation. But now, I didn't took that decision to uh, to have a, a, this type of meeting just because uh, Commissioner, you are aware about the incident that happened last week at this chamber. Violence will not be allowed. I will not tolerate physical violence or verbally on to any Councilmembers. We need to learn how to conduct ourselves. And, and we are the leaders uh, that the community is looking. Yes, you're right. We're elected by the people. But we have to look at the way that we conduct ourselves. We have to be able to disagree with respect, with our insulting and respecting each other. And as a Council President, I would not allow that. Now, let me answer to you. Let me give you another information. I can't like to stay. We getting ready to go on a retreat. First week of November, all of us as Councilmembers. Because our community, they deserve to see us conducting ourselves in a professional way and talking about our city business. We need to be able to disagree with respect. We could not, we cannot come here and try to jump on any other Councilcolleague. And I'm talking about Councilmember, the respecting all the Councilmembers, speaking over all the Councilmember and try to attack that, not under my watch. If we wanna go to the chamber, and this go to the public as well, when we can, when we get back to the chamber, because next week, we're going back there. You have three minutes on the public portion. You have to respect your Councilcolleague, and you have to respect the rest of the people in the chamber. We are on TV. Everybody's looking at the City of Patterson. And this is not the picture that I'm gonna send it to the rest of the city out there. We need to learn how to conduct ourselves. And I know we going through a lot. I know we going through a lot, but I need to protect Madam Clerk, the staff that is here, and us. So I'm looking forward to have that retreat with all my Councilcolleague because I do believe that we have the capacity to be able to disagree with respect. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Okay, Mr. President. Mr. Rafael? All right, thank you.
Hello?
Please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Uh, I'm not sure if it's me that's speaking, um, because I obviously can't hear myself, but in any event, uh, it, my name is Darlene Morris. And I'm speaking to many issues. One issue is that I feel as though this virtual meeting is a deliberate attempt to silence the people, just like how that uh, Andre had a meeting up there, um, at Hitzkun Stadium during the middle of the day where nobody could really come and hear what he had to say. And then tonight, he heard the voices of the people. The people feel unsafe. And you guys feel unsafe, and you go hide in the building or in your home. But the rest of the constituency have to dump bullets, get your family members killed, and then no one, absolutely no one addresses those issues with the community. No one went to those families and expressed their condolences. And then today, when they were uh, sitting at the head table, no one even had the gumption to get up and address the family in a compassionate manner. They saw that the people were upset. They saw that the constituencies agreed that they felt unsafe. But no one stood up and spoke to those issues, which I think is reprehensible. In addition to that, um, on many occasions, we have heard the councilpeople ask the B A for follow-up on information. We never hear that follow-up. So to us, it doesn't exist. I don't understand, when you ask a question publicly, why it's not answered publicly? I think it, you have shown disdain and disrespect the entire council to your constituency. It seems as though you look out for yourselves, but you don't look out for the people that you're supposed to represent. It's crazy. And the thing is, is that when you want everyone else to practice decorum, but you don't practice decorum. You don't practice respect. You don't practice concern for the constituency at large. So I think that you have to take all of that into consideration before you just start criticizing other people. So my thing is, is that I think that you, when you go on your little vacation in November, you need to be authentic with one another and speak the truth. Talk about how people have their weapons paid for, how they use the fire trucks, and if they paid for them or not. All of the things that we see that we don't agree with, but we can't have anything to say about it. And that's all I have to say this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morris.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. Next speaker, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President, just one moment, please. The other person is on? Tell them to come on. They're going, it takes a while. I ta- okay, I'll just repeat. Mr. President, because you're going through the menu, I understand it takes a while. So in the meantime, I'll just announce the number again.
Please, Madam Clerk?
It's um, to participate in the meeting, you may call nine seven three, three two one, one five seven nine, and enter meeting ID number eight three two six. Press star one if you just want to listen to the meeting, or press star number three to be added to the speaker key. Again, the number is nine seven three, three two one, one five seven nine, and the meeting ID is number eight three two six. I understand the call is now on, so I'll just wait for them to announce their name.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, uh, so, so once again, Patterson, the phone number is nine seven three, three twenty-one, one five seven nine. Um, the meeting ID is this number, signal of number eighty-three twenty-six. Press one to listen to the meeting and press three to be added to the speaker. Uh, Madam B A, I know you sent me a uh, an information about the retreat Councilmembers I met with D C A. We met last week with D C A. We also met today again with D C A. I have multiple conversation about a retreat for us as Councilmembers um, to have a independent conversation with an expert about best practice. How can we, how can we work in a different way uh, and, and bring best practice to our governing body? And we have a day and time, Madam B A, so, okay, you, um, so if we don't have, Madam Clerk, do we have a person on the line?
That person is on the line, but um, he's saying that we cannot hear the person, but um, he's reaching out to the individual to um, call in.
Thank you, thank you. So Madam B, Madam B A, you send us the day of November before the legal municipality. That was it, that was the uh, the uh, the day available? Or do we have any two, two different?
Keep telling me to speak.
I'm sorry. There is a pres- Mr. President, the call is now on the phone.
Yes, good evening.
Please state your name and address.
Michelle Tobias.
Yes, Mr. Tobias.
Sixty-nine Straight Street, Patterson, New Jersey.
Thank you, Mr. Tobias.
Hi, how are you?
I'm great, thank you.
I'm on?
Yes, you may. Go ahead. You're on.
All right. I wanna address this to all of the councilpeople, starting with Alex. Alex, I've known you for many years. I've been in the hospital, had four operations on my eyes. I called the council and asked, could you give me a little special consideration to come to one of your meetings? And you never got back to me. I'm leaving it at the door. Louis Velez reached to me. Mr. Jackson reached to me. And I wanna thank Mr. Jackson for helping us over here where I live in Freedom Village with the big problem that we had. Now, I understand y'all saying you want this meeting quiet and, you know, respect. But I would like to come to y'all meetings too. I live at Freedom Village, Councilmembers, where I'm afraid to come outside. I called the chief's office to have special units and things come here. I seen three shootings out of my window here by the senior building. Ruby Cotton, my counsel, she could've came to my meeting and sat down with us tenants when all these shootings took place. We are afraid. We're seniors. Now, I understand, like I just said, you want peace in your meetings. And we want peace in this town too. I'm afraid to death. Where I go, I go to the door, run in and run out. I'm not a, a child no more. I'm a senior. We're afraid. I appreciate this meeting, but I will appreciate, I called every councilmember on that board to talk to me, and I only got a few of y'all to answer. Mr. Jackson, Louis Velez, and Ruby calls me sometime, but Ruby's not doing the job for me for this ward because I'm afraid to death. This is one of the worst ones. Now, Ms. Memes, I thank you for bringing up about the bathrooms in the park and everywhere because I went in the summer. It was the nastiest thing I ever saw. And like I said, I had surgery to my eyes. I was so afraid it was gonna be more than animals in there. People, they were very, very nasty.
Mr. President, I think uh, her time has expired, so she's off the line.
Yes, uh. Council President, um, Council President, Madam Clerk. I'm receiving a lot of calls. People are not able to get into the system. It keeps dropping them off. They said they're calling in the number, they're pressing the correct button, and it's dropping the calls. I just got like seven text messages.
I'll tell the I T technicians, um, I'm not sure if there is anything they can do at this. Just a moment, Doctor Memes.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Councilwoman Memes. To, I know Michelle Tobias is, is listening to the meeting. I will repeat my cell phone number, Michelle. My cell phone number is nine seven three, nine three zero one four three six. If you was calling me on my city phone, my, I didn't have my city phone for, for a while. I was waiting for a new equipment, so I do apologize. You know, I tried to go, I go over every text, every missed call. But you might call me on my city phone, and I do apologize that I made, I didn't make that announcement that I wasn't using my city phone for a while. I was waiting for a new equipment. So, but you could call me at the nine seven three, nine three zero one four three six, and you or any member of the community. Madam Clerk?
President.
Have a new speaker?
There's another person waiting.
Councilwoman Davila?
Let me just quickly just say this, um, uh, Ms. Tobias has my number. Um, I've spoken to her on numerous occasions. I've been to Freedom Village. She has not reached out to me, so I don't know what number she's calling. But I just wanted to put that on record, cuz she says she reached out to everyone, but I have not received a call from her, nor a message.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davila.
Call, um, caller, if you're on the phone, you may go ahead, state your name and address. Please go ahead and, yes, go ahead, sir.
Yes, good evening.
This is, this is Mr., this is Mr. Price. Um, I'd definitely like to request.
What's your name, sir?
More than three minutes. My name is Mr. Price. I live in the third ward. Um, I definitely would like to request more than three minutes because in order to reach you guys, first of all, let's start with this meeting. Having a virtual meeting like this, and the Council President being able to decide for the people, that's a no-no. This is not a dictatorship. We didn't elect you for that. This is a democracy. The, this is the people's house. You have to be there to serve the people. If you don't wanna serve the people based on what we elected you for, you guys should give up your seat. Now, let's get to this list of things. First of all, the technology is horrible. I had to dial in twice myself after I sat on hold for forty minutes, listening to all of these ordinances that you're passing, all of these, the niceties. Just stop it. We're in a city that has a problem with crime, we have a problem with police. Most of you guys don't even respond to emails. I send emails every week. And I can tell you, there's a handful of you that don't answer at all. Councilwoman Davila, you're hard to, you're hard to catch up with when you don't respond to emails, as well as abilities. But when you start to think about what's going on in this, this city, we wanna have meetings in the city to speak about what our problems are. But all we do is come here, and it's like coming here and complaining to nobody because we'd never get our issues addressed to the public. We need you guys to stand up and do what we're paying you to do. Councilman Mendez, I call you, you don't answer. Half the time you don't answer, you someone will call you back. You never call back. I complained about parking on Ninth Avenue from East Twenty-Ninth Street all the way to East Eighteenth Street. And nothing has been done. Patterson Police is horrible. I sent you guys an email today about an issue with recycling, the plastic bottles being stolen out of the cans at the curbside. I gave you that as a nugget for you to figure out what's going on. I called Patterson Police, over an hour, nobody comes. When the police finally come, they said, oh, the police want you to come outside. For what? I called you an hour ago. That's ridiculous. And if you're gonna have a virtual meeting, you should test your technology first and make sure that it's right. And by the way, I came to you guys over a year ago asking about having meetings, virtual as well as public portion meetings in person. And nobody wanted to do it, except for a handful of you. Now, because somebody's feelings got hurt because of a few words in the city council meeting, all of a sudden, now you're gonna make the meetings virtual? How dare you? You go to the public's house, and if Councilman Jackson would've broken the law, then the police could've arrested him. They did not. Words are just words. And it's time out for you guys to sit next to each other and be nice to each other while the city goes to hell. You look around, nobody in the city feels safe. Nobody. But you continue to do this. Nobody follows up on calls. You don't respond to emails. I wanna know about those cell phone bills that we pay for you guys. If you're not gonna answer the cell phone when I call you and respond, or you're gonna give an excuse to me, like several of you have done, will you go, oh, call me on my personal cell? For what? I paid for a cell phone for you as an elected official. You answer that phone. If you're not gonna answer the phone, give it back. Let me, as a taxpayer, stop paying the bill. You don't respond to emails? How dare you? You guys wanted to hire aides. You hired the aides and you're paying them out of my pocket. But I can't get a simple question answered from nobody? This is a level of incompetence. Councilman Mendez, I told you, I, I voted for you last time. You will never get my vote again. I told you that. The mayor's incompetent. We have a city police department that's being run by someone, not even from Patterson, let alone, I don't even know what his title is because it's made up. What is officer in charge? What does that mean? Same as New York, I guess that's the reason why people are allowed to park on the corners, at the stop sign. The lawlessness here is worse than any other place. You wanna copy Newark? You wanna copy Jersey City? You wanna copy Fairlawn? Start at the bottom and simply just enforce the laws that we have on the books. Don't tell me about copying Newark when you wanna add to the budget. Don't do that. But the foolishness has to stop, and none of you guys wanna be accountable. If you wanna have a meeting like this, get your act together first. There's a lot of people that live in this city that are professionals. And the way you guys run this meeting, it shows right away that you didn't practice. You didn't try it. You shot straight from the hip, and it will fail you every single time. Again, get it together, and we need our business administrator and this mayor to answer to the people. Because I guarantee you, if they can't do that, we need to get them out. You hired all of these people in this administration that weren't qualified. That's why they're struggling with the jobs. They're not qualified. So you can get in there day one, but guess what? If you can't balance.
It's uh, Madam Clerk, is the speaker still on the, on the, on the line?
I think we, I think we have lost him, um.
Right. So Madam Clerk, before we get to the next speaker, to Mr. Price, Mr. Right. So Madam Clerk, before we get to the next speaker, to Mr. Price, Mr. Price, I know he, I know he's gonna be listening to the, uh, he gonna be just watching us on YouTube. He sent me a, he sent me a text yesterday at ten oh seven, and I responded to him immediately. That's the text right here, Mr. Price. That's your cellphone number right there. That, that's you. You sent me that text, and I responded to you. So you sent me the text at ten oh seven, and I send you back my response at ten oh nine. Once again, Mr. Price, that's, that's, that's your text right there. Um, that's your text. I do apologize if I don't get to you on time, on a timely manner, but, uh, and I, last night you sent me a text, I send you, uh, the text right back. You, you, we have a open dialogue. You got my personal number. And you, you sent me a text at ten AM, and I'm answering you back at ten oh nine. Ten oh seven, I'm answering you back at ten oh nine. So very open to continue the dialogue with you. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Next speaker, will you state your name and address for the record, please?
Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead, sir.
Okay, okay. Corey Teague, sixty-five French Street. Um, just want to bring something to your remembrance, okay? September twelfth, there was a very contentious meeting over the cannabis legislation. And there was a group of residents who came in and almost tore up the chambers. Uh, there was no talk of going virtual then. Um, I find it very disheartening that members of the city council and the mayor are trying to put this virtual meeting on Mike Jackson. Let me be very clear with you. Louis Velez knew what he was doing that night. Mike Jackson made it very clear that his cousin was murdered that particular night. And when a person is going through trauma, you do not antagonize them, you do not whisper things and try to be rude to them, and then cry victim when things don't go your way. Okay? I think that this particular move tonight was a childish one. Oh, you're the council? Yeah. You guys could say, oh yeah, let's go virtual. But I think tonight, there's a narration out there to make it seem like Councilman Jackson is making the place unsafe. There's police in the building. You know what's not safe? What's not safe is out here in the streets. That's what's not safe. And the public doesn't have the ability to say, well, we gonna go virtual too. No. We are out here in the streets tonight, in these dangerous streets of Patterson, because we care about our community. We're not getting paid to be out here. We're out here because we are guests of Mike Jackson. He is going to have a meeting tonight with us, and we were going to be present for it, and we were denied access to the building. Okay, we have a constitutional right to be here. This meeting should be in person. There's absolutely no justification for having this meeting virtual tonight. I don't care what any one of you say, because none of you, as far as I'm concerned, have said anything about Mike Jackson or given him any type of condolences, or said, we're sorry to hear about what happened to you, we're sorry to hear about what happened to your family. You guys use this as an opportunity to attack his character and to assassinate him, and, and, and the things that he's doing in this community. He's speaking up for us, and we need more council members on the council who are gonna do the very same thing that he does. Don't worry. There's three minutes for each speaker, but there's seven months coming up before we get to May twenty twenty-four, and some of those seats need to be flipped. That's the only way that we gonna change it. So to the public, you have the right to flip those seats in May. That is your choice. That is your option. They have the power to go virtual, but you have the power to remove them from their seats and bring people who actually give a damn about you and about this community. Have a good evening.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Just a moment, Mr. President. Let me have Ryan key the person up.
Council President.
Madam, Councilwoman Mims?
I know that, uh, IT is still trying to identify the concerns, but I am continuously receiving text messages from all over the community. I just got four text messages from the third ward in particular, and they wanted me to let you know that these are your constituents, Council President, that are calling in, and there are others from other parts of this community. Um, I have reiterated the message that IT is working on it. Um, but I just wanted to let it known that people are trying to get through, and they're having some issues.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mims, and, and let me use this time to apologize to our constituents uh, for the situation with the, uh, you know, with the phone. Um, the problem that we have when we go in virtual is when we open the public portion, the system that we're using, it's not the best. So once again, it's not us. We do apologize, as you see that before we opened the public portion. We've been conducting city business on a very, very effective way. Uh, so we're going back to the chamber next week.
Next person is on, Mr. President.
Yes.
Um, Speaker, will you please state your name, please state your name and address for the record, and go ahead, please.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, ma'am. Go ahead, please.
I'm sorry, I didn't know if I was on. My name is Katrina Langford. I'm from the first ward. Um, I'm actually sitting outside of a building that I'm, that my taxes fund, and I'm unable to come inside and have a meeting. Um, I have three kids that go to school here, and I'm petrified to send them to school. I'm scared to, for them to walk home with their friends. I'm alert on every, on every single, single pop and every firecracker I hear outside. I hear these, these helicopters all day and all night living in the River View Towers. There is no help when it comes to anything. I feel like it doesn't matter how far we go. We get ourselves up, we get ourselves dressed to come down here for you guys to say we can't even get in the building. That's ridiculous. Never mind you that on the internet, it does not say that it's a Zoom meeting. It says it's in person as of still, right now. That's a problem. Who is to say of, you know, who makes the plays of who can be in the chambers and who can say something and who can't? I feel like Council Velez took a, a personal swing at Mike Jackson. Mike Jackson didn't even respond with the actual swing, with the actual, you know, a, a affection. Nobody still said anything to, to Mary's family. Nobody still said anything to Mrs. Mary Taylor that passed away. We're nobody's safe. You could believe it. Nobody on that chamber right there got my vote besides Mike Jackson. He's the only person that's out here for the family, for the people right now. You don't have to convince this man. You can call him at one, two, three o'clock in the morning, and he'll listen to your concerns, and he'll make a way. I just want to let y'all know, y'all wrong, but you will all see me next week.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Just a moment, Mr. President.
Council President.
Yes.
Uh, while we're waiting, um, I just want to put it on record that there were multiple council people in our last meeting, myself, Councilwoman Davila, and others, who gave our condolences out to the Taylor family. We know the father personally. I mean, I have served on the school board. He has advocated for his daughter since grammar school. There's not just one council person that is advocating or have given their condolences. There was a heavy outpour last week. I have spoken to the dad. The dad knows me as a pastor. I've spoken to him many times, and we are personal friends. So I just want to put that on the record that it's not, you know, and not just for the Taylor family, but for all the families, because there was multiple people that were killed in our community with this, within that same timeframe. So I just want to put that on record, Council President, that it was not just one person that made commentary as to the unfortunate, senseless, uh, shootings that are going on in the community, and that was a part of the prayer on tonight as well. Thank you, Council President.
Council President, if I may, I want to agree with Councilwoman Mims. Um, it is-
Councilwoman Davila, just give me a minute before. Madam Clerk, I know we, uh, we spare. I'm also getting texts from members of the community that they tried to get in. Obviously, we have a technical, uh, issue with the phone, Madam Clerk. Let's see, if we don't have any other call, um, I do apologize to all the members of the community that are on the line or tried to get in. We gotta fix that with Ryan, one of the technicians. So next week, we, we will be back at the chamber in person. Uh, so once again, council members of the community, we do apologize. Our virtual meeting-
I think Ryan is saying there is one more speaker on the line. Because of the, yeah, the technicalities to get in, it takes a while.
Okay, I could just quickly, uh, uh, I, in agreement with Councilwoman Mims, um, I, as I was the first person that, that addressed, um, you know, uh, Mr. Taylor, who I've known, um, for quite some time. And today I also embraced him and spoke to him. Um, unfortunately, I do not know the wife, and truly my condolences to the mother, um, and to all that Councilwoman Mims stated. Um, I know Reverend Lagard is, is, um, in charge of a few of the funerals. Um, I have some information that, you know, we can put out, and I can share with my council colleagues. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davila, and, and, and definitely, um, you know, I do agree. Everybody ought to watch the council meeting. We all express our condolences. He's a good friend of mine. Um, you know, the, the, she was a friend of my son, Alexander. My son is twenty-two also as well. They, you know, they know since this is early, you know, stage. And, and it's, it's sad. I mean, it's really sad. We all express our condolences. And, and listen, we're going through a very difficult time. We live in this community. My nephew live in Rosa Park. I have to, you know, I have to pick up my son, drop him out of school, and also pick up my nephew, drop him out of school because of the situation that we're going through in this community. Uh, you know, so, so we're not disconnected with the reality. Uh, and this is not a dictatorship. I totally agree. But we gotta be mindful that if we are, if you are, if you agree and, and say that what happened at the chamber last week was, was right and it was fine, we do have a huge problem. We have a serious problem. And as a council president, I'm looking forward to fix that. We already have a retreat. We all gonna come together. We elected by the public. We're elected by the people to do city business and to fight for our community, to fight for our residents, to make sure that we bring safety into our community, and to give opportunity to our Patersonian. But we have to conduct ourselves. We have to be able to disagree with respect. And I'm not, I'm not talking about only one council members. There's all the council members. I do instigate and mention all the council members, but that's a problem that we have to fix amongst all of us. So, so, uh, we cannot agree with violence. We, we gotta stop this situation. But, you know, so, so I'm just gonna leave it at that, Madam Clerk. If we have the other, uh, member of the community-
Yeah, one person is coming on now, Mr. President.
Otherwise, we will close the public portion. And once again, to all my constituents in this, uh, in the third ward and in the entire city of Patterson, my cellphone number, it's nine seven three, nine three zero one four three six. What we're going to do, Madam Clerk, is that the people that are on the list, that they couldn't get on the public portion, let's add them on the list on the next meeting, which is the next workshop, will be next Tuesday. They will be the first, uh, members of the community that will go on public portion.
Yes, sir.
So if you're not, uh, if you're not in public, if you couldn't participate on the public portion, please send an email to the clerk, send me a text, uh, or just call in. We will make sure that you know, that your name and address will be on the list for the next meeting, which will be, will be on Tuesday. Obviously, we have a problem with the phone, uh, and it's been very difficult.
And Ryan is saying that there are about ten people in queue to, are lined up to, to speak at the public portion.
Yeah, but the, the problem is, Madam Clerk, we continue having problem with that. So can we add, can we add those, do we have the information of all the speaker quick?
I'll ask them to take their information.
Please, tell, tell Ryan to please take all the information, uh, for all the speaker that we have on the pipeline. Uh, and they will be first speakers on Tuesday meeting. So, Madam Clerk, let's make sure that we add all those residents that couldn't get it, because we have to fix this, Madam BA. We cannot have another, uh, meeting, another, uh, uh, virtual meeting without this, with this situation that we cannot get in contact with the community. Uh, and it's been very difficult. It's even hard to hear them. Uh, so-
Council President.
Mad, uh, Councilwoman Mims?
So I just want some clarity, because some people are in queue, they're on hold, and they can hear the conversation. So are you saying those people are not, well, those people that are in queue will not be allowed to speak tonight? They would have to wait?
We're waiting for Ryan's call. So if Ryan could put it in, it's no problem. But if it's, if we could, if we cannot, and we continue having this issue, because I'm also getting texts, Councilwoman Mims, about people they tried to get into, and they cannot get into the line. So that's what, that's what happened.
These individuals are in queue, so they're just waiting-
Okay, so the, the one that are in queue, so let's finish with the one that are in queue. And the rest, if, if you see any missed call, let's make sure that we take that information, because we want to make sure that they get the opportunity to come in person and speak on the mic on next Tuesday, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ryan is working to get them on right now. In the meantime, um, the number to call is nine seven three, three two one, one five seven nine. Meeting ID is number eight three two six. Press number, press star three to be added to the speaker key. It's nine seven three, three two one, one five seven nine. Meeting ID is a number sign or hashtag eight three two six. Press star three to be added to the key, to speak at the public portion. Thank you. So, Mr. President, if I may, since we are on, and we're waiting, if I may, I may use this opportunity to advise the voters of Patterson, that the last day to register to vote in the general election on November seventh is on Tuesday, October seventeenth. The city hall or the city clerk's office will be open from eight thirty AM to nine PM at night. So those who are not registered or you're eligible to be registered as a voter to vote in the election, please utilize that last day on October seventeenth to utilize that time to register to vote and be a voter in the city of Patterson, the general elections coming up on November seventh. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Clerk. So once again, Ryan, we have ten speaker on queue. Please try to, um, you know, make the, make the effort of, uh, put it in then on one by one, uh, those ten speaker. And also, um, any person I call, let's try to get the number. Let's get back to them. And let's make sure that we could add in, or add that on the list on the next meeting, please, uh, Ryan. Uh, so just give us a minute, Councilwoman Velez. Do we have any, any, any speaker yet, Madam Clerk?
No, I haven't seen my end of the line lit up as yet, Mr. President. But he said he has like ten people in queue, in the queue.
Council members, that, that is a problem. We have people, we have ten people in queue.
Hello?
Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and address for the record. Yes, I'm hearing you. Go ahead, please.
Yes, um, my name is Teresa Freeman. I'm a, um, a resident of Patterson, New Jersey. Um, Total Avenue. I am not sure what ward that is. Um, I just wanted to address, uh, what's going on tonight. I'm here at City Hall with, um, Mike Jackson, um, in support to try to get inside the building. We're still out here waiting. Um, I did want to say that I'm very displeased with how, um, you guys orchestrated this tonight, where people came out. I invited people. I had my family members come out to find that the Zoom was to be televised. And instead of people being able to come in in person, which it says online that they're able to come in person. And then Mendez, I wanted to address something that you said, that you guys knew that this machine, this system, wasn't the best system, but yet you still decided to use it. And I feel like this makes it harder for a lot of individuals to be tapped in and in tune with what's going on, because not only is you gotta do the number, you can't watch the meeting at the same time you're calling in the number. You can't look at the agenda while you're watching the broadcast. And then in order to get the agenda, you have to print it out, which people aren't accessible to be able to do so. So I just feel like this is just another form of censorship and trying to control the narrative of what we are able to and what we cannot and can't do. You know, it's a lot of elderly people that come here to the city council meetings who are not technically savvy, and you guys still decided to proceed with something that you know wasn't efficient at all. This is not fair to the citizens. We come here every week, one day out of the week to voice our concerns, and you guys act like y'all can't sit and stay in place to listen to what we have to say. This was literally a terrible system. I had called in so many times and kept getting pushed back in the queue when I was next in line. I did not like how this thing was, and then say if you guys didn't continue to keep displaying the number over and over again, it just doesn't have the same impact. It was very hard for us to be able to do this, get on, and it was very complicated. Like, this is not fair. And I don't like that you guys will sit here and do this when you know it wasn't efficient enough to get it done out here now. All of a sudden you're deciding to, next week to bring it back to what it should originally been in the first place. If you guys want to have the Zoom as an extra precaution, then yes, while y'all work out the kink and drugs. But to sit here and deny people be, from being able to come in in person is ridiculous. Well, we're, when we doing this on our own merit, we're not forced to be, and we're doing it because this is our city. This is where we live. This is where we were born and raised. Y'all censoring us, and y'all trying to discourage us and thwart us from coming and voicing our concerns. And then I find it funny how one of the main city council members, uh, Abeladie, that was pushing so heavily for this agenda is one of the main, um, city board council members that's not present. And the fact is, no one has yet to mention that, bring that up, say anything in regards to, when he pushed for this, and again, yet- When he pushed for this, and again, yet it's televised, which he asked for, and he's not even, he's not even in the queue, not even present. It's just, it's just constant disrespect, week in, week after week, when you guys, we pay you guys to do this job. You are in service to the community, not the other way around.
Do we have a speaker on the, um, so the speaker, um, Ms. Freeman, the time, so she got disconnected?
I think she's disconnected, yes.
Yes, she passed the three minute, Madam Clerk, but let, let's, let the record reflect. And it's important that the community understand that we tried before we opened the meeting, before we, before we tried with our meeting. We tried this system. Everything was in place. I spoke with Ryan on a multiple occasion throughout the day, in the morning, this afternoon, and everything was ready. Unfortunately, the system, the phone system, it's not working. I have a member of the community that said, I I tried to get in the line and and it's getting, he's getting a pushback by the system on the phone that doesn't allow him to get connected in the line. That's another area that we gotta look into. So this is not something that, that is, is not, is out of our control. But Ryan have to deal with this. So let's finish. People that we have in queue, Councilmember Les.
Yes, Council President, it's, it's good to, um, uh, because, um, Ryan knows the system.
I have a caller, I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Yes, we do have another call.
We do have another caller on the line. A caller, you may go ahead and state your name and address for the record. Go ahead, please.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay, I'm back. Because I got cut off and I don't think my three minutes was up. But anyway, I'm back. This is Valerie Freeman again. I just wanna say two short things and then I'm out. We have to be fair. If we wanna move this city forward, I'm saying to you all up there, you have to play fair. We're not gonna pick and choose who we attack and who we don't attack. I've sat in that council chamber several, several meetings. And I've saw council people go back and forth with the community. Real nasty. Nothing was done. I saw a group of men disrupt the whole meeting from the six wards. Nothing was done. Nothing was said. Mike Jackson bonded to Louis Velez agonizing. And now, all of a sudden, everybody's afraid. Alex, I'm glad you said one thing, that you guys are going for training because you absolutely need it. Because there's a saying that excuses are tools of incompetence. And that is what I see there. Saying something to somebody is not a crime. And I thank Mr. Price for bringing and saying everything that he said. And this right here is total, total, total control. Having total control and keeping the people out. So you have to answer to it. You can't get upset because people are calling you out. Because you, this is the job that you took. This is what we, we voted you in those seats. We pay you. So you have to listen and take the concerns of the people seriously. What I see up there, I can't stand it because it's a bunch of bull. Back and forth, back and forth, arguing, arguing. You wouldn't argue if you wouldn't antagonize. Because if you antagonize me, you push me to a certain level, I'm gonna react. And you will too. But you sit up there and you all act like you won't do it, but you will. I would rather you keep it real and and respectful than try to play a game. Because we don't have time for games. This city is about to be on fire. And you wanna have a virtual meeting with this lackadaisical technology? I don't know what type of technology it is. I don't know what the, the person who's running your technology department, where he's getting paid. I'm curious to know. Because this is garbage. As many times as I had to call in and call in and call in and call in, then just to get cut off, then to call back again. So yes, I called again so I can be heard. But we not gonna pick and choose who we gonna attack and who we not gonna attack. I don't like it. I'm fair. I'm fair across the board. And when you address that, the, the council people who antagonize people, then, then I'll listen to you. But until then, I'm not trying to hear nothing you're saying because it's a blatant attack against Mike Jackson. And if we lose Mike Jackson on that council.
Um, I think that she's, um, yes, Commissioner, thank you for calling back. Uh, you know, we're not, we're not taking side over here. So once again, we going out for training. We do going out for training. The first week of November, we have a retreat. We're gonna have a different, separate interview with an expert. And I hope to see all my council colleagues attending, uh, all of them, the nine council members. And and after that, the Saturday after, the next day, which will be a Saturday, we're gonna have a retreat. We're gonna create our own bylaw that we're gonna be abide by and respect. And and once again, we're not taking side here. Uh, what I saw last week at the council, we choose to have this meeting. We're going back to the chamber next week. We're not hiring anything. We checked the system. Mr. Price, you sent me a text. We checked the system in the morning, in the afternoon. Uh, and and it was working well. Technology, it happened. So the public portion is not, is not, is not good at all. We totally understand. We get it. Uh, and but like I say, I give you the proof. You call me, you send me a text at ten oh seven, I send you back a, I reply back at ten oh nine to you. We're not playing politics here, members of the public. I want my city to move forward. I want my city to be better. But we need control in this chamber. And I'm, and I'm not talking about one council member specifically.
Mr. President, we do have another caller on the line.
Let's get the other call. What's the next call, Madam Clerk?
Caller, can you please state your name and address for the record, please?
We cannot have another, another virtual meeting with this technology, uh, Madam BA, Madam Clerk. It's just impossible.
Okay.
C- Council President.
I mean, council members, uh, give me, give us a minute. Let's see if we could add the, the other speaker. That's, that's uh, what I mentioned, what I recommend to move the rest of the speaker for the next meeting. It's just because of that. Even though they're there in queue, it's so difficult for them to jump in the, in the, in the, in the, in the meeting. It's uh, I don't know, I don't, I don't have the answer. That's not my expertise. Technology is not my expertise. But we cannot have another meeting, Madam BA. We cannot have another virtual meeting with this technology. It's horrible. It's unacceptable. We not try to hire anything from the people. I want, I like this, you know, virtual meeting because, you know, for uh, for some idol. Uh, but you know, our, the community, the residents, they cannot get in touch with us. So I have a regular meeting with us. Uh, you know, very brief, Councilmember Les.
Yeah, it's gonna be brief. Uh, the, the reason I'm rejecting is because everybody say the, the, the visual meeting. Visual meeting is visual meeting. What, um, what Ryan should look is for an application that really fit our needs, because I think the Zoom has restricted all of us in some aspect. So in, in, in the Zoom meeting. Zoom is an application that if, um, if there's another one that is more effective about views, is better off. So I just wanna say that because they have some rules in Zoom. Uh, and Ryan should, should explain that for people to understand that is, this application is not created by us. It's created by Zoom application and should be out, out there should be another application that work better than this one.
Do, duly noted, Councilmember. Madam Clerk, how many more speaker do we have? Let, let's, uh, let's get back.
The last time I spoke with, um, Ryan, Mr. President, I understand that there might have been about ten, um, members of the public in key to speak at the public portion. So far, we have Ms. Freeman. So I'm assuming there are nine other speakers there.
Okay, so can we try to, let's, let's get, try to get the speaker in, um, Madam Clerk.
Council President.
Can you put the next person on?
There, there are many speakers in queue, including her, and he, um, has texted me as well. But I remember a couple of weeks ago in the meeting, it was a live meeting, and I talked about the disadvantages of this virtual experience. We have these same similar, similar experiences during COVID that it dropped the calls. We could not hear from the public. I said it a few weeks ago, so I was really surprised to hear that we were doing virtual tonight with all the situations that are going on. We've had these incidents, incidences before where the calls were dropped. People could not get through and they were trying to retrieve the calls and they could not. So and my phone is on fire. So I, I don't want anyone to say, well, members on our phone. I am, because the public is like very upset. They cannot get through to speak to us. So I am praying that next week our meeting is live because we need to hear from the public. We've, we had a lot of shootings and a lot of situations going on in our community. And people are very scared and they feel, um, unsafe. And so, uh, I pray that we can hear from these people that are calling in tonight. I'm not sure what they can do to, to, for us to allow that. But we need to hear from the public, because I am a resident here and I had to make a phone call because the light in front of my house, they put a new system in, and our street is pitch black. So there's many concerns our community has. And we have to make sure that before we switch to virtual, do anything, we should have communicated or polled the entire council to ask what should be done. And possibly, we would not be in this situation on tonight. Thank you, Council President.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, uh, Councilwoman Memes. So let's, let's hear from the next speaker. Um, Madam Clerk, we're waiting on, on Ryan.
We're waiting for the person to get online, Mr. President. Our technician said there, um, yes, please go ahead and stage. Yes, we're hearing you. Go ahead and state your name and address, please.
Yes, hello. Good evening. This is Commissioner Victoria O'Kendo, Fourth Ward, Patterson, New Jersey.
Yes, Miss O'Kendo.
Good evening, um, Council President. I was hoping that you would, um, appease us with an explanation as to why you called this virtual meeting. It appears to me you did it to prove a point. And you're gonna have to keep that same energy when you're in the council chamber. Because everything you said this evening, you could have said in council chamber. You could have faced the people considering the type of week we just had. And you could have given the people that, but you didn't. On another note, I just went on the rent, rent control board, um, on your website. The city of Patterson can really use a new website as well as a new telephone system. On your website for the rent leveling board, you still have Jane E. Williams Warren as mayor on that page. That needs to be corrected. And I wanted to bring your attention, your, um, statute three eighty-one dash one, which is a statement of policy that the governing body of the city of Patterson does hereby declare that an emergency exists within the city of Patterson with respect to the rental and housing dwellings in Patterson. And that this emergency was created because of housing demolitions and deterioration. That needs to be changed because that's not the case anymore. Because now those houses that were once demolished and deteriorated, they're rehabbed, they're new constructions. So now the emergency that exists within the city of Patterson is not with, with respect to a lack of dwellings places. It's high inflated rental prices. So I'm asking you to take a look at that. And also, I was wondering, because we had our first board meeting, and I kinda really feel like this board is kinda on their own. And I really don't see the support that I was hoping we should get with this board. But we, we don't have a steady attorney. And I was hoping, according to S three eighty-one six, that it appears it has in brackets that the council, and then it has Corporation Council shall annually appoint and assign a current city attorney to the rent leveling board. We need one that's not gonna be a seat filler just to get past, you know, the requirements. We need one that's gonna dedicate its, its time to this board, or it's not gonna succeed. And also, my condolences go out to anyone who was impacted by the senseless violence that has taken place in our community. And the people are looking for leadership. They're looking for the people who they went to the polls and placed their, their confidence and their finger on a button to choose you. And the least you could do is face us. Thank you.
Council President.
Uh, thank, thank you, Victoria, Commissioner Victoria Kendo. Thank you. And and once again, I do apologize to the resident of the city of Patterson. This system is horrible. Uh, we will not have any other, any other virtual meeting with this system. Because definitely, we as an elected official, we have to listen to the people. We have to listen to our community on a, on an effective way, and it's not happening. Councilwoman Davila?
Uh, Council President, if I just may, I'd like to, uh, address Commissioner O'Kendo. She did reach out to me as well as others concerning, um, the lawyer for the board. Um, I was in a meeting with Corporation Council. And I was specific in the question, are they going to have a steady lawyer for the board? And his answer was yes. So they are going to have, it's not gonna be, you know, a different person. There's gonna be someone steady for that board.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any other?
We have other speakers, yes.
Yes. I'm sorry, Council, Council, uh, Madam Clerk.
Uh, we have other speakers queued up for the.
Okay, let's, Councilmember, let, let's continue with the, with the public portion while, while we could get the speaker. So once we finish, and then we, and then we regroup, and and then we take our time during the closing section, okay?
Council President, with all due respect, you just allowed two council members.
Yes, Council.
Council members to speak.
Just give me a minute, Councilman Jackson. While we're waiting, while we're waiting, if the speaker is not on the, on the line, I will open the floor for you. But if the speaker is on the line, then you could stop. Let the speaker use the three minute, and then we go back to you. Do we have a speaker, Madam Clerk, on the line or not?
The person's not yet on the line, um.
Okay, so.
As soon as it comes on, I'll let you know.
So I will open the floor, Councilmember, to Councilman Jackson, once we let the, the, um, the speaker on the public portion. And then we stop right there, because otherwise, we will never finish the people that we have in queue. Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Council President. So first of all, um, I, I wanna express my disappointment in you, Council President. Just a moment ago, you talked about how, uh, uh, inferior the system was, but it was through your call, your directive, your leadership that we're now sitting here that I have to, you know, allow my constituents access because their access is being truncated by through your actions. So I wanted to point that out because here you are stating on a public meeting that, you know, the system is terrible. But yet, our community is being sidelined. And I, and I resent the fact that you utilized me as a pawn in that game. That's not fair. So I'll rest it there until it's time to close. But I wanna point out to the members of the public that I will not be a part of what you, what you, uh, uh, attempted to do tonight in, in derailing the public's access. This is a public meeting that we are required to answer to the public's concerns. So if I have to utilize my own office, and let me start by thanking, you know, um, um, uh, the Attorney General appointed Chief Abasi for having a clear and level head. Because, Council President, you gave another directive which was unlawful. You know, there was no law in the books that states that a council member cannot have access twenty-four hours a day to this building and, and not have guests along with me. And my constituents, as far as I'm concerned, they're my guests. They're not members of the public when they come here. They're my guests. I'm here in a seat by virtue of their, their, uh, support of me. And I will not re, uh, not render my support back to them when they needed most, when it being turned away. As I had to do in the case when Jameek Lowery was murdered. I had to do it in the case when, uh, uh, Najee C. Brooks was murdered. And now I'm forced to do it again. And it's my own family member whose life was senselessly taken. And not you, not anyone else on this council, not the mayor, not one of you took the time out to call her family and even say to me that you're, you're sympathetic in my loss. So your actions tonight is showing a lot. Your lack of leadership is showing a lot. And I'll, I'll rest it there for a moment, but I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Madam Clerk, do we have any?
Speaker, if you're on the line, please go ahead.
While we're getting the speaker on the line, let me remind all the residents of the city of Patterson that, yes, we checked the system in the morning and afternoon. The system was walking. It was working perfectly fine. And we have this technical difficulty right now with the members of the public with our public portion. Uh, it's even, even during the meeting before the public portion, everything is working well. So now, Madam Clerk, let's make sure that whoever doesn't get the opportunity to speak on the public portion get on the list for next Tuesday. And once again, Madam BA, we cannot have another meeting with this system. Good evening.
Mr. Speaker, Mr. President, there is a speaker on the line. Please state your name and address for the record and go ahead. Speaker, if you're on the line, please go ahead.
Hello?
Hello, please go ahead. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Warren Ellis.
In the morning and afternoon, the system was working. It was working perfectly fine.
Sir, please go ahead. I can't hear your name.
Warren Ellis.
Okay, Mr. Ellis, please go ahead, sir. You're on.
Yes, good evening. I'm calling in as a Patterson city resident, as a veteran of the United States Army. I think this tactic you took as far as going virtual is cowardice. Now, the least to say, like, nobody up there can accept constructive criticism. Nobody up there can accept. Nobody up there can accept constructive criticism. Every time somebody points something out, you gotta immediately respond with, oh, I caught, oh, we caught, oh, I did this. Just take it. If it don't apply, let it go. And another issue, how you go up here and allow the public people to speak three minutes when you guys speak for twenty minutes on every issue? But the public can only have three minutes. You overpopulate the city with people and then you turn around and give us tickets for parking on the corner. What kind of bait and switch is that? What about, you're saying the inflated rent that this guy is going around doing to people? People are living in apartments in the middle of the month. They're having ten different people coming in their apartment talking about, oh, we're buying the building. So your rent is changing. Oh, we're buying the building. All day long, you got people running in and out of people's apartments and that's okay. You're giving tax abatement beyond your, beyond your state. You're not going to be the mayor for twenty years for now. So who gave you the authority to give a tax abatement for twenty years? It's just some, a whole lot of oxymoron going on for the lack of better words, because I don't want to use con humanity. But you people really need to step back and take a look. You're not perfect. You're not God. You're saying you can make mistakes. Accept it. Take a look at it. You understand? And maybe you can better yourself. You have to go back to public portion meetings. Stop using the state as a crutch. Cause you're, you're saying that's called fraud. You call it a state of emergency. What state said that? Who said that? You're not the governor. You can't announce that. You're a city council person. Respect your role. Answer to the people. Stop hiding on a poor system that you can't even get correct in there. But now you're going to try to get us to respond to it. Just take a look at yourself. You're not perfect. You're human. Accept your fault. And move on. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Next speaker, Maricla?
Just a moment, Mister President. Let them get, Ryan get the person on the line. In the meantime, we are waiting, Mister President, if I may, may I just announce that date for the late night?
I made a council member list. Let council, let Maricla announce it and let's not use the phone. Because I know Ryan reached out to me and he wanted the line to stay open for us. Let's not make any more comment until we finish public portion. Go ahead, Maricla.
I just want to reiterate that the, the last day to register to vote for the November seventh election is on Tuesday, October seventeenth. The city clerk's office will be open from eight thirty A.M. to nine P.M. at night to facilitate those voters or those individuals who would like to register to vote, first time voters and those who would like, who have moved into the city. We are open on that day to register them to vote so that they can take part in the elections on November seventh. Thank you, Mister President.
Thank you, Maricla. Councilmember, Ryan wants us to leave the line, not occupy the line with our comment to make sure that the speaker getting into the line. So let's, let's wait. Uh, Maricla, just work with Ryan and let us know.
We have four more speakers in the key and he's going to put one on right now.
Okay, please. Four more speaker.
Hello?
Hello, please state your name and address for the record and go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm hearing you now. Please state your name and address and go ahead, please.
Thank you. This is Shania from the sixth ward. Um, I just want to come on and say that I'm very disappointed that my councilman from the sixth ward is not there. Being that he is always an advocate for virtual meetings and for some reason he's not there. Um, and he keeps speaking that his ward stands behind him. So I want to know who is he speaking for? However, I personally don't agree with virtual meetings. Tonight is a prime example of why it shouldn't be a virtual meeting. You are depriving the people. People can't get on. People are waiting for hours. We could have just came to the council chambers and had a meeting because this is ridiculous. Also, how do you as a council president not hold these certain council members accountable for always leaving and coming late? Why is it okay for certain council members to speak out of turn? Your actions aren't for the people. I hear you, you've been saying all night, we're listening to the people. Well, the people don't want a virtual meeting. So who are you listening to? This feels that you are, I feel like you're trying to silence the people. What are you teaching our youth in the city? This is not proper governing. We as a people, we don't feel safe in the city, but we still go with our everyday lives. So how come you call the virtual meeting because somebody doesn't feel safe? Some of the members of this council needs to do better. Please put your feelings aside and do the work for the people. Thank you to men for always stepping up and listening to the people. You guys need to get on the same page. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanaya. Definitely I agree with you. We will have the best system. We're not going, uh, on virtual. Um, so we got it. We're going back to the chamber on Tuesday. I would like to invite you to come into the chamber and have that conversation with us. Because the system that we're using, our technology is horrible. And, and so I see better technology in other towns. So, so we, we have to, we have to do better on that. Right? And we, on regards to holding council members accountable, I'm looking forward to have that retreat uh, for us to sit down as a Cali to have a conversation on how can we move the city forward? Uh, and how we can do city business in a different way. So, uh, next speaker, Maricla?
Yes, Mister President, just give me a minute. Um, Ryan is keying the person up.
There's three more speakers.
While we're waiting, Council President.
Just a minute, Councilman Jackson. We have the speaker on the line. Go ahead, Maricla.
Go ahead and state your name if you're on the line.
Hello, my name is Ajay Bell.
Ajay Bell? Go ahead, please.
Ajay, yes. Um, so I'm just here basically to give my two cents. Um, as a Patterson resident, uh, I live downtown Patterson. Um, and I'm here to basically just like give my two cents, uh, the parking downtown for the residents. We have no type of accommodations here. Um, people have been coming to the city council meetings and, you know, advocating for downtown residents to have some type of parking assistance. And the only thing that I've seen is a Dominican consulate now having a parking space in front of my house. So I just wanted to know, what are you guys going to do for Pattersonian residents as far as parking for housing that is metered parking, right in front of city hall, right downtown, church street? All these different, um, buildings in which we paying two thousand dollars plus in rent? And we don't have anywhere to park. Um, our cars are getting picketed and towed on a daily basis. And we can't afford it. I can't afford to live in the city that I was born and raised in. Um, the homeless community is rampant, rampaged and out of control. Um, not only I can't walk out the door without having to step over somebody else's dwelling, but in the set of the building, um, outside the doors, in the schools, in the parks, everywhere. I, I teach here in the city of Patterson as well. So before taking the kids out to play or before being able to take the kids out, we gotta take, tell the homeless people to get up and remove themselves from the park. Can these parks be closed at nighttime so the kids will be able to have a fresh start in the morning to be able to come and play? Um, another thing I would like to say is that y'all, y'all, y'all gotta do better. Just y'all have to do better for your residents and you have to do better. I'm not, I'm, I'm a photographer and videographer. I'm only here to document and capture what is happening here at city hall in my city and be able to advocate for African-American females like myself and advocate for them. But ain't nobody advocating for us. We need help. We need help. Um, Mike Jackson and, um, Councilman, Councilwoman Mim's are the only people that I see advocating for me. For us, by us. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next speaker, Maricla?
Yes, Mister President, I'll just have Ryan queue with the next person up.
We have two more speaker?
Yes, sir.
So just, uh, let, remind Ryan, Maricla, that any member of, of the public that call, we have the number. Let's call the person back and let's make sure that we add that his name on the list for next Tuesday. And that will be the first speaker on the next meeting on Tuesday, okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Once again, I do apologize to the community. I know I've been getting, I'm still getting texts, uh, messages about people trying to log in and they haven't be able to log in. This is a real problem. Good evening.
Please state your name for the record. Go ahead, Speaker.
Yeah, uh, Jimmy Freeman, Patterson, New Jersey.
Go ahead, Mister Freeman.
Yes, uh, someone, someone gave me their turn and everything. Look, I came down here for, uh, where am I going? Yeah, uh, I came down here for a city council meeting and, uh, to find out if it's a virtual meeting, man. I mean, what are you guys doing? Uh, you violated so many rights and everything. You have a whole bunch, we had almost a hundred people outside waiting to come into this meeting. I'm handicapped. But it's outrageous that you, the mayor, whoever else, your crew voted for this is outrageous. You know what? We get tired of this. All right? I came down to this meeting, all right, to address some certain things in Patterson. But the way you guys are conducting so-called government and violating, doing whatever you want, secret deals and all this, the oldest man, we are tired of this. And I'm glad to see that these young people are tired of it too. And we gotta organize to try to get rid of these people who are impeding our rights, not doing anything to address poverty, not addressing crime, not addressing the drug epidemic, not addressing excessive use of police. And I give it, the police that we're here are very cultural. But to have us waiting two and a half hours outside, to me is outrageous. All right? You don't want, typically you don't want black people to come to these meetings because you know, we're going to show up and show out. We're going to speak the truth of power whether you like it or not. And you're glad, you know what? Hopefully the next meeting that we have, we're all going to tell our people and hopefully we sell this stuff out to show up, to put you guys in your place. You're supposed to serve us, all right? Not serve yourself or your special interests or your buddies or Andre's people or whoever. If you're not for all the people, then you don't need to be there, all right? That's right. We the people. That's the first three sentences in, in the Constitution. And right now what you're doing is unconstitutional and you know it. And guess what? There's going to be a whole army of us that's going to come for you. And guess what? Ain't nothing you could do. We're going to be disruptive. We got to stop traffic. We'll go back to the sixties, man. And guess what? I'll teach them exactly what to do. We've done this before. We coming after you. And whoever don't like it, we voting your asses out.
Next speaker, Maricla?
Yes, Mister President, um, Ryan is keying the person up. Just be with me, Mister President.
Sure.
The person is on? Okay. Mister President, um, the call is input in a number. So they will need a minute, I'm told.
Not a problem. Yeah, that's a lot of speaker. Let's try to see if we could get it in. Um, and also, Madam, Madam, just get the list of, uh, speaker that couldn't get into the line and make sure that, that you share that with us. So once again, I know I have a lot of constituents from the third ward and also the area of the city of Patterson that they've been calling. I do apologize, uh, today, uh, because the system, it's just horrible. And we cannot have another virtual meeting with this type of system antiquated that we have. Uh, so my apologies. We waited for the last.
Member of the public, if you're there, please go ahead.
Council President?
Hello?
Just a minute, Councilman Jackson. We got the last speaker. Hello?
Hello?
Yes.
Brother RC? Hello?
Hello?
Are you there?
Hello, Brother RC?
Good evening.
President?
Did you hear me?
Yeah.
I'm not hearing you clearly. Are you RC?
Yes, I'm Brother RC, yeah, yes.
Just a moment, please.
Yes, go ahead.
Mister RC, please go ahead.
Yes. Hey, how you doing? Uh, first and foremost, um, I got, um, the information late. Um, thank God I was able to show up. I thank God that we as a community, um, tonight, we was very transparent, uh, very respectable, you know, with law enforcement, uh, thank the chief. Uh, and my condolences to all the families, um, that has been dealing with things from Philly's day, hey, Zeus, C. Brooks, uh, C. Brooks, Brother Jackson. You know, it, it's, it's really sad when, you know, I see the elders come out here, you know, just to voice their opinion about respect, love, how to move the system forward. Um, what kind of bothers me a little bit is when people start talking about leadership, but then you don't reach out, you know, to the public that could probably inform you of how to do some things to make situations better. You know, because you keep getting the same results. So if you're getting the same results, then sometimes you have to take a different medication, speak to different people, you know, and move in a different way. So you said three or four times about going on a retreat. Whatever that's supposed to mean, I don't know. The bottom line is if you're going to be a powerhouse for Patterson and you're talking about moving forward, sometimes you may have to separate from some of the people you're dealing with and be laugh out of spirit or maybe just talk to the right people to really move this city forward. Because it's not only about one person. When you look at the school system, you look at the seniors, you look at all the drugs that's going throughout the city. You're talking about smoke shops. And what's really, really hurtful is that when you have developers coming to our city and they're not putting money back in the city and then you're talking about raising taxes. Knowing that the cost of living compared to twenty or thirty years ago, it isn't the same. So you really have to, you know, mount up, do what you gotta do, all the things you've been saying for a long period of time. Stick to your agenda, be the man that you are and just do what you gotta do. When people are upset and they are emotional and you should know this as an adult, it doesn't mean that they are the worst person in the world. People go through things. People dealing with trauma. They dealing with stress. They aggravated. They tired of seeing the same results. And you keep giving the same speech. We are the community and you're for the people. At the end of the day, your actions have to be louder than your words and your words have to be the man that you are. So if you continue to just do what you need to do, a little bit at a time, connecting with people and putting, I would say God first and realizing that, you know what? You have to really do what's best, not only for this generation here. There's a generation of us and they're watching us. They're watching us. And I'm gonna end on this note. I have to honestly say once again, we were downstairs for a few hours. The officers, they was very respectful, you know, respectful. And the audience that was there, believe it or not, it was more people than what you see in this office now. Because we are here to really get along. You don't have to like what we say, like you said earlier. It is okay to agree to disagree, but you still gotta move forward. So I appreciate you all listening and I really hope that Tuesday night, I really feel that things are going to be better, uh, move forward. Because at the end of the day, we cannot stay stagnant. We have to move forward. We have to move forward. It's not about me. It's not about you. It's about us. It's about us. So thank you for taking the time out to listen. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, so Maricla, if we don't have any more speakers, so let's, a motion to close public portion?
It took me an hour and twenty-four minutes to get through, just so you know. An hour and twenty-four minutes, bro.
We have no more speakers in key, in the key.
And, and, and before, and before, and before we close, and before we close, I know my council Cali, they would definitely make comment about the horrible, the horrible. comment about the horrible, the horrible system that we have, and I do apologize. Yeah, so, so, council members.
I wanna, I wanna make a comment before we make a motion to close public portion.
Go ahead, council members.
That are telling me they're in the queue. So can we have Ryan check the queue? Cause it's telling them they're on hold and they're up next. So I refuse to make a motion when the public is in a pipeline to get on to speak. So can we have IT check to see what's going on? I, I have multiple people, uh, uh, at least five people on my phone that are saying they're in the queue. So we need to check that before, and I don't know.
And I'll go speak with Ryan.
Uh, Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk, yes, Council members, thank you. I'm getting all those texts as well. Probably tried to. Madam Clerk will talk to Ryan and see if Ryan could let, let them in. Uh, as long as we get somebody on queue, we're gonna try, we're gonna do our best to make sure that they get online and we wanna hear their concern, okay?
Council President?
Councilman Jackson.
Council President, um, so I'm getting those texts as well. Ms. Carla T, who's not here with me, she's texting, she's on queue, but I also have, I have three people who are still on hold, on the queue here. I can just bring them. And, and, and can you explain, can, can, Ryan, can you explain to me why my picture is not coming active when I'm speaking?
Uh, uh, no, I say you're on TV, Councilman Jackson. You're on TV. You are on TV. So, so, so let, let's.
I have multiple speakers here who are on hold. And what we had to do, because, because of the feedback, when the other speakers came, when it was their turn, I allowed them to take the seat so that, so that we didn't have a technical difficulty with the feedback. If you can, I can bring each those, the three that are on hold, they can take their turn here while Ryan is still working out to try to get caller.
I, 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 I agree with that.
Mr. President, um, Ryan said there, um, there are a couple of people who've been trying to get in, but every time they call, they got disconnected. There are two people that, um, one is on now.
We have one, we have one now.
Please state your name and address and go ahead.
Carla T, First Ward Patterson.
Oh, Carla T.
First, I would like to give my condolences to all the bereaved families. Secondly, I would like to address the last. Now, several meetings, you guys choose to bring God into your, your meetings. So I'll stand and ask you, whom do you serve that would let you provoke? Now, what, whom do you serve that would be okay, were you provoking Councilman Jackson knowing that he had just lost his cousin? And I don't need an answer. You, you can just wrestle with that on your own. Second, I would like to say about the decision for the helicopters to fly that low night after night after night after night. We have children that already traumatized, walking to and from school and living in this dangerous city. We have veterans that live in this city and you don't know what type of trauma or re-trauma caused, what type of re-trauma you could have them visit by hearing that helicopter that low. The next thing I would like to say is, Councilman Mendez, you apologize for this system and not working and said that it wasn't your fault. Well, I'm here to tell you that it absolutely is your fault, and I'll tell you why. Because we knew that this system was no good during COVID. You can't test the system, but unless you have phone calls coming in to test the public portion, you knew that this was gonna be the same thing in the same way that it was with COVID, which was no good. I don't know what type of incompetent and complacent council this is, but it is absolutely disgusting to watch. It's disgusting to be a part of. It's embarrassing to live in this city and have you all behave in a manner that you do. And I would also like to tell the, the most of you that are on the council that everything that you all accuse Jackson of, while you're accusing him, you're doing it too. And it is not a good look. How well did it work out for you to cancel this, cancel the live meeting and hold it public because of Jackson's actions, so-called? How well did it work out for you, Vales? It didn't get the response that you all suspected, I'm sure. So I don't think any retreat in the world that you all can go on will fix this. You all need to examine yourselves and get your own separate individual help and come back and start it new and run this city better than you have. Because you all have won it like trash. And then you wonder why it, it, it's functioning the way it is. Look at yourselves first. Correct yourselves and stop putting stipulations on the public that you don't put on yourself. I have nothing else to say. You all have a good night and God bless you all.
Thank you. God bless. Next speaker, Madam Clerk?
Just a moment, Mr. President. Yeah, put the person on, please.
Hi, good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, please state your name and address for the record and go ahead, please.
Hi, Jamel Karaballo, Fifth Ward. Uh, good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure being here with, um, all of you. Unfortunately, this meeting was, I was down at the city hall. Unfortunately, I got turned back around because the meeting was not going to be held in person. Um, first and foremost, I give my condolences to everybody that has lost their life due to gun violence in the city of Patterson. Uh, today is, um, uh, uh, sorry, October tenth, which is World Mental Health Day. And I just wanna take some time to acknowledge that and the importance that it is and the importance that is needed in our community. Now, I'm here to speak about the Fifth Ward and some changes that I've been seeing around the last couple of months. Um, here in the Fifth Ward, prosecution is definitely on high rise. Um, on Eighteenth Avenue and Twenty-Second Street, there has been multiple car, um, accidents. Within the last three months, there have been at least three, um, accidents. So I am making, um, just to publicly know and for you what to know, if they are riding on Eighteenth Avenue, which is right behind the Shell gas station, if you are driving on that avenue, there's a lot of children that live around this neighborhood. We also have eighteen-wheelers making dent in our streets that are coming up from factories that are from the dead end on East Twenty-Fourth and East Eighteenth Street. Um, I attended a few conferences within the last few weeks. And I've had panelists speak on the city of Patterson and basically telling people to not do business here in the city of Patterson. That affects us economically as a city. That affects us in each and every way that you guys could think of because people do not wanna come and invest in the city of Patterson. Um, also, there has to be a, uh, uh, um, an update with your website. I went currently to check, um, who was responsible for some wards? And I just not, nothing is updated on that website. So if you please could check in with who's the person that does maintenance for your website. Um, and, uh, we, we know that you guys are going on a retreat, but I also wanna make it a note that the whole city right now needs a retreat. I don't know how, and I can't understand how we could be celebrating anything in the city of Patterson with the city's mourning with so many deaths, deaths. I am a mom, a mom of two. I am nervous of sending my kids to the bodega, nervous even allowing my children to play outside. Now, we have been, as a community, linking these crimes to cannabis, and I just wanna de-stigmatize that. That is myth. That is not what's happening in our city. Um, and I also wanna speak about, um, register to vote. Uh, fellow residents, please let's register to vote. We put these people in position. We are, we have to hold ourselves accountable for what, who we put in position, who we put into power. So please just be vigilant of how and whom we're putting, um, in these positions. I also contacted, um, each and everyone, you know, on the board of each and every council to speak about, um, the education on cannabis that we need as a community for people twenty-one and older. Um, I remember being in the fifth grade and being introduced to the DARE program. Well, programs are being initiated in our public school system that are teaching our children about the safety consumption of cannabis and the regulations that are in, put into place. We have a multi-state operator in our city on, uh, Third Avenue, which everyone's really familiar of. How, how are we as a community, um, coming up with, uh, logistics and agendas to teach the right, to teach the regulations and the policies? Um, and I think that I, that's all that I have for this evening. Thank you guys so much for listening to me this evening. I pray that our city, uh, just goes forward and we do what's best for our residents and not our pocket. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Caraballo. Uh, Madam Clerk, also, Councilman Jackson have three members of the community that are on his office that they wants to, they were on hold, so like, what we do is, do we have anybody else? If we don't have anybody else on the, on the, on, 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 um,
We don't have anyone in the key from Ryan's end, so they could go ahead.
So we're, so we're gonna take the three members of the community that are in Councilman Jackson's office. Uh, so, um, so we're gonna start, and we could start now. Good evening.
Good evening, Count, uh, President, uh, Mendez. Um, I'm here tonight basically to, um, express my displeasure with us having to wait outside. Um, I do not agree with the meetings being virtual for many reasons, um, because it censors us. Uh, this is not even organized. The public had no real notice or knowledge of it. Um, some people were here, some people weren't here. Um, and I think that this caught everyone by surprise. I know that you guys felt the need to do this because you saying, because of Councilman Jackson's behavior. But I don't agree with that. You know, I, I feel like the bear was poked. When you know someone is grieving, you don't poke the bear. And that's exactly what was done. You know, it's no different than putting a dog in a corner. Either he's gonna fight or flight, one or the other. And I feel like you guys, you know, you have to come together and be a little more mature about how you're handling not only the public, but each other. Because we're watching you guys and we're a little fed up. We're a little fed up with you telling us, you know, let the public portion be open, speak, and we're gonna hear everybody out and we're gonna answer everybody. Um, even myself, I, I came out of character two weeks ago because for two weeks in a row, I stated a little bit of the same dis, you know, displeasure with the council for certain answers that I had asked for from Kathleen Long. Um, I talked about Colleen Cooper, who was wrongfully shot in the back. Um, you guys chose to focus on cannabis. My biggest issue with this council is they pick and choose um, the things that they wish to address. I don't feel like that shows equality to our, our public. You know, who's watching and those of us who are there in person. Um, so I feel like if you're going to tell us to sit and wait for three, four, five, sometimes as long as six hours until all the speakers have been heard and then you'll address each and every issue, that you should show the integrity to the public and address each and every issue. If the council doesn't take their rightful role to address each and every issue of said speakers, then you as the president should show some more leadership and answer every question that has been asked of that council. I, I don't understand why you guys took office if you're not going to serve the people. You can't serve certain people. You have to serve all people or step down. Have an evening.
Council President, can you check?
Thank you. There's other.
Can you just check quickly with Ryan? I'm hearing that, uh, the meeting is muted, so they're, they didn't hear any of that. So could you double-check that with Ryan?
No, no, no.
I just thought like.
Let me double-check, give me a second.
He heard her, he looked up.
No, it's not. That's not, Councilman, that's not correct. Councilmember, it's not correct. I have a TV. I have a TV right, I have a TV right here. So we, it's, it's live, it's on TV and, and the sound, and it sounds great. The horrible situation that we're dealing is with this, uh, with the, uh, with the public portion that it's just horrible. And it's, we cannot have another meeting with this, with this type of technology, which is not my expertise. Quite honestly, I don't know what, what we, what we, what we're dealing with because I was under the impression and it's my understanding that we improve in this area, we make some improvement and some investments up, but let's, let's not even talk about that. We have two more, two more, two more members of the public on Councilman Jackson's office. Let's go, let's go with the next one.
The next speaker, go ahead and state your name and address for the record.
Billy Preppa, Fourth Ward Patterson, New Jersey. First off, uh, Councilman Mendez, I'm extremely, extremely insanely disappointed because last week, if, if, if I'm not mistaken, last week I was here and I, I told you guys, I said that I believe that this, what you're doing is a violation of the sunshine laws of the state of New Jersey. Everybody has the right to have access to these public portions. And even with these public portions, there's people in this room that couldn't get on the phone, there's people that couldn't get into the city council meetings to attend these council meetings. Even on the website, it still says that the meeting is in person. Many of these people were misled, didn't know what the heck's going on. And for whatever reason, you guys decide that the Zoom is the best way to go. It's not working out and Councilman Mendez, from the very beginning, this is a good idea, this is great, we should push this through. Now, oh, I don't know what happened. It's technical difficulty. This ain't my expertise. I don't know what I'm doing. Why would you do this? If you, if you've not tested out the system and you know it doesn't work, and even another member of the public came up here and said that, why don't we have a hybrid? We can have people on Zoom or we can have people at home like we've always done. Even with the city council meeting, if you only record one of the meetings and the other one is non-televise. To me, it's nonsensical because if you are, if, if you are an elected official, you guys come up here and you talk about transparency and we have to have open meeting and open discussion and all of that is just fluff. It's all just talk. Because at the end of the day, you guys wanna do what you wanna do. At the end of the day, you don't want the people to interject, you don't want the people to come in and say what you wanna say. Even some people that were on the meeting today that were trying to get their voice out to the public, their mics were cut off, it was technical difficulties and all kinds of nonsense. You can't have a proper discourse that way. Uh, you can't have a proper discourse that way. I believe you guys are in violation right now. And clearly, every single person in this room did not vote for this. Nobody in the city wants this. Nobody wants this. Abdul Al Aziz talking about it, Mendez talking about it. You guys want this. You guys wanna sit home. Most of you guys are probably sitting at the desk just chilling with your shirt up. You probably don't even got anything underneath. You're probably just enjoying your time at home. You guys are supposed to come in here and do your job, alright? It's a hard job. It's a tough job. Sometimes you end up wrong, sometimes you end up right. Sometimes people are gonna criticize you, sometimes there's things that are gonna happen that you don't like. But that is your job. You know exactly what you signed up for. Every single one of us bust our asses. Every single one of us pay our taxes to be in this city. Every single one of us have the right to face the people that we put inside those chairs. And the fact that you guys are hiding behind the camera and acting like you guys actually represent the people is ridiculous to me. Next year, election time is coming up, and I don't think any of you guys that supported this and voted for this, Davila, Vales, Mendez, all you guys, every single one of you guys need to go. Every single one of you guys need to go. The fact that Mike had to go through all this nonsense for the people to do what they're supposed to be doing in the first place is insane to me. The fact that you wouldn't even allow people to come into the building that we pay to keep open is nuts. Earlier today, the mayor's talking about building a recreational center. If you guys wanna be home on Zoom, you might as well knock down the city council building, you might as well, I mean, knock down the city hall building and make this into the rec center if you guys wanna stay home. But if you guys wanna stay home, then resign. Get out of the goddamn chair and give it to somebody that actually wants to fight for the city. So people that actually give a damn about the people, because at this point, everything you're saying is straight up nonsense. And until you prove me otherwise, which at this point you cannot, I think it's time for you guys all to leave.
Uh, thank you. So we have, we have one, one more speaker, but Billy, let me answer to you right back because let's not mislead the community. We're not voting on anything.
No, no, this is not, this is a misleading.
No, no, but listen, we're not voting, we, we, we never voted on the, on the meeting to be.
Why are you on Zoom right now?
No, 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 sir.
Then why are you on Zoom?
So you wanna let me?
Why are you on Zoom? Then why are you?
That's what you want. So you wanna let me, you wanna answer, or this is that, this is the type of dialogue that you want? So just, I'm here for you. Are you, are you ready? So we never voted on any virtual meeting. Next Tuesday, we're going back to the chamber on the workshop and on the regular meeting. I don't want. Can you, can you let me finish? I don't want the community to get the information, the, a wrong information that we going through. So we're not going Zoom. We're going back to the chamber, on workshop, on regular meeting, and so nothing changed.
So then why do we go through this giant rigmarole?
So, so, and I, I just, I just wanna be clear on that. So we got one more, we got one more speaker, Madam Clerk. So we got one more speaker.
Yes, Mr. President.
Bro, you can't vote it out. Mark my words, I'm gonna do everything in my power to make sure you're gone. All you people need to go. You guys are ridiculous, bro. You really disappointed me. I'm really upset with you, Mendez.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker, please.
Bring him up, bring him out the door. Talk to him, he didn't know what he's done.
You're the council president.
Xavier Harris, Patterson.
Good evening.
Good evening. Um, every week I come up to speak and you and a couple of the other council people commend me on how I commend me on how I speak. Today, if it wasn't for Councilman Jackson, I probably wouldn't have had the opportunity to speak. And that's really, that, that grinds my gears. Because I remember my friend called me out of my bed and said, "Bro, I need you to come down here with me to speak." Coach Burton. And ever since I received that call, any meeting that I was able to come to, I've been here. So for me to have to call, get disconnected, try again, get disconnected, for everybody to have to hold, be on wait, and just go through this whole process is crazy. Like, I don't understand it. If people are showing you that they want to help and contribute to the city by voicing their opinion, and they have to go through obstacles and jump over hurdles and pick up a telephone and, and I'm very tech savvy, so I went in mine. But when I had to sit back and watch people who are older than me and the elders be disabled and they can't take part in this process because some of them don't even know how to work a cell phone. And you're taking away from the public. This is all this does is take away from the public. And it's disheartening. And it sucks because if the public can't voice their opinion, then, then what are we doing here? You guys are supposed to be for the people, serve the people, and this was the easiest way to, to quiet the people. It's, it, it doesn't make any sense to me. Secondly, I wanna bring up the, the whole helicopter situation. There's babies, kids that have to be up for school, like my mom stated, Carla T. There's war and military veterans. You don't know what kind of mindset that a noise like that will put somebody in. It could have been another casualty, another homicide, all off of, of a sound that wouldn't stop, a repeated sound. You never know what mindset a person snapped back to, to, that been through certain traumas. And it's just, I don't know how you guys try to make it seem like you're making the situation better, but nine times out of ten, the situation is only getting worse. Nobody wants to hear a loud helicopter flying over their house at, at twelve, two, three, all night, all night till the morning. Like, people have jobs, people have to work. It's just, it doesn't make any sense. And lastly, I wanna state that I counted about four or five times where you said that this, uh, the technology's bad and, uh, this system sucks and, uh, plenty of other things. But how can you sit there and say all of this, but you stood on the side of this? It's just, as a leader, you can't say one thing and then when things go bad, you chalk it up and say, "Oh, no, this does suck." This really blows. Like, no, that's not how leadership works. A, a true leader would have said, hmm, uh, I would like to say I was wrong. And, and apologize to your fellow constituents of your ward, the rest of the people that's in your city because you are the president in the governing body who is supposed to be the leader. It, it doesn't make any sense. And for Al, who is so, so hell-bent on getting virtual and hybrid going on, where are you? Absent. So when it's not Zoom, you're absent, and when you're on Zoom, you're absent. What are you sitting in the chair for? To be absent? It, it, it just doesn't, it really gets me very upset to see the, the job that you guys are doing. And I know if I'm upset, everybody who sees this is pretty upset too. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, motion to close public portion?
Yes, may I have a motion to close the public portion?
Oh, my Councilman, last second by, do we have a second?
One more.
Second.
Motion, second. That's a motion in first and second.
I miss, Mr. Sebastian, we're gonna allow, we're gonna allow to get in before we call, we call on the vote?
Okay, I, I greatly appreciate that, and I'll be as brief as I can.
Please.
Every single member of this governing body took an open office. And in that open office, you swear on the constitution, which is the, the, the law that governs this land. Part of the amendments of that constitution is our freedom of speech. I, I see this virtual meeting as a trial, as a sample of things to come. As was said by the sixth ward councilman, he wants to push the city to the twenty-first century? No. He wants the city to be in nineteen eighty-four. Where everything is controlled, where the people's voice is controlled. It seems like every day we're pushing closer and closer to a dictatorship. Where the people and their voices do not matter, they are to be minimized and discredited. Because of the, whatever happens on that side of the dais should not reflect on, and the public, it should not be punished, the public should not be punished. Because the quorum is not had on the other side of the dais. If we are expected to be respectful and be quiet while others are talking, the same thing should be had on the council body. When a council member is speaking, the others should be in the quorum and not speaking. If that is held in place, all these situations would be avoided. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sebastian. Uh, so we have a motion called by Councilman, last second by Councilwoman Davila. Roll call, uh, council member to close the public portion?
Roll call to close the public portion of the municipal council regular meeting of Tuesday, October tenth, two thousand twenty-three. Councilwoman Davila. Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, uh, Madam Clerk. So, um, before I vote, I, I wanna just, uh, take a moment to address a few of the issues. Council President, your, your actions truly, truly need to be, um, uh, checked and adjusted. Um, you know, I, I think that even tonight, your, your attempt to keep me from having access to the building shows that you, you, you lack the ability to, um, to obtain authority. You, you, your belief is that your authority is larger than what it is. A council president does not have more authority than a council member. We are all duly elected. We are all endowed by the public, not by our own egos. The fact that I had to wait outside and have the, the acting chief travel from his home in order to, to show clearly that there is no existing law to prevent me from entering, it shows a level of, uh, incapability on your part and immaturity for that matter. Um, you know, I, 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 I truly respect the seat that I, that I hold. I understand that I hold this seat at the leisure of the public, and I don't, I don't take, take that for granted. And I don't, don't try to overutilize my authority. Um, but I think there's a very distinct difference for me, myself, and a lot of other people. I don't need to announce myself as being the councilman or the guy. You know, I'm here to do the public's bidding. I think if we all took that into account, um, I mean, things, things would be a lot more, the, the perspective would be a lot more clear. Further, just to, uh, uh, acknowledge, you know, some of the public's commentary, you know, it's been, this has been going off for quite some time, Council, Council President. You, you have totally, totally dropped the ball in your initiative. I know you stated multiple times that it was your, your job or your initiative to get me in check. But I'm sure if you, if you haven't gotten the memo by now, maybe you could check with a lot of my instructors through that, throughout the years. I'm not a person to be placed in check. And in fact, you, I, I'm, I'm only going to go harder when challenged in that fashion. And I'm not going hard for Mike Jackson. Mike Jackson's stature in the community has been well proven for many, many years. I'm going hard for the people who are being sidelined. I was going hard that day for my cousin Mary. Mary Taylor, who since, whose life was sens- sensibly snatched away from her, whose family is grieving. There was also a young lady in the audience that day who I was referring to, who she lost her fourteen-year-old daughter who was killed on Essex Street. And, and the lack of, uh, of sensitivity by fellow council members and you, Council President, on your watch, you failed to delegate and to hold the quorum. Instead, you chose to chastise me yet again. Even tonight, you said, "Ryan, well, Ryan said, let's keep the line clear," yet continue to speak after each and every speaker. The council presidency does not endow you with more, uh, capabilities and power than other council members. We're all here to address our public's concerns, our constituents' concerns, and we're all here to equally hold people accountable. But I cannot help, a- and, and, you know, my disappointment goes further because you and I, we shared many, uh, uh, conversations where we were, um, you know, we were, uh, similar in our, in our ideals. And the fact that you, that you have now taken on the parade that you used to talk down about, the ribbon-cutting parade that the mayor is doing throughout the city, and I can't help but to see the fact that you and the mayor are running side by side. As we are, as, as, as a body, I say we, but I'm excluding myself from that part of the conversation, we're excluding the members. You know, I had close to seventy people outside, seventy people tonight. And that's because a lot of people knew that the meeting was going virtual. Many people went home because they were older. And, and I wanna send, send a special, um, shout out to Ms. Wahida Mohammed, who was here with us as well, who also is a steady visitor here, and she did, she was not granted the, the opportunity to address the council because of your decision, Council President, your decision. So I agree with the constituents. You need to own it, you need to wear it, take responsibility for it, and make sure, because an, uh, 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 an empty apology means nothing when the plan is to continue to, to, you know, these types of activities. So, again, let me send a, a special thank you to all the officers involved, not just the chief and not just Captain Murray for coming down here, but the two officers that was complete gentlemen, who are always complete gentlemen. And ne- never tried to, um, overstep their authority, but was put in a very vicarious situation by you, yet again, Council President, who gave them an unlawful directive to restrict me from this building. So let me remind you once more, I am duly elected, just as you. You might feel more power, you may be doing, uh, campaign fundraisers based on you having the, uh, council presidency seat, which I commend you for. I take my hat off to you for being able to maneuver that. But once you overstep the bounds in, in trying to, uh, um, derail the public's access, you will have me standing in opposition of you each and every day. So with that being said, Madam Clerk, I appreciate the time and Ryan and all of the technology team. You know, and, and I'm gonna say this, Zoom is a, is a piece of technology that's being utilized all over the, the world right now. It's being utilized in court systems. It is not a horrible technology. So that was an unfair depiction. What it was is poor preparation, poor, uh, 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 execution, and it was, it was a poor ability, it was, it was a lack of, uh, uh, of providing the proper tools to the staff members that we have. Because if we provided them with the proper tools, we wouldn't be having these, um, these, uh, uh, mishaps. So that again falls on the shoulders of this council and the administration. I hope that tomorrow, Ryan isn't getting a me- a memo stating that, you know, he, um, he, he dropped the ball on something that he was put in a, in a very, uh, uh, precarious situation just to, within a week's time, to turn this thing back around. So with that being said, I'll rest it there. And, um, to the members of the public, let it be clear. When, when someone else is failing to answer your, your, to your calls, you could trust and depend on me that I will do it. I will be there. I, as I had to explain to the chief tonight, I am prepared to go to jail for what's right. And everybody in this room can vouch for that. Everybody in this room can vouch for that. Martin Luther King had to be jailed multiple times for you, Council President, you, Councilman Shaheen Khalid, you, Councilman Louis Velez, you, Councilwoman Davila, you, Councilwoman Mims, Councilwoman Cotton, for myself, for every one of us, for Madam Clerk, to be sitting in that seat. Many people were sprayed with hoses. They were attacked by dogs. They went to jail. And I'm willing to do the same just to prevent my people from being treated like second-class citizens in their own community. And I'll rest it there.
Your vote, Councilman Jackson?
I, I apologize, Madam Clerk. I, I got all excited. I was giving, I was giving the Martin Luther King speech right there. I had a dream. But, um, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman Khalid?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I think whole city is more of the violence that's going on. And there is no point of pointing finger at other council members. You might do more. You are, everybody is duly elected by their constituents. You know, so that, so I think all of us need to look at the mirror and rectify ourself and our action. And every meeting for last year, year and a half, the reason Councilman Mendez called the virtual meeting, everybody knows why. Everybody knows. It's not a laughing matter. This is not, isn't that the first time Councilman Jackson attacked somebody? He came to my face more than once. I know it is, it is, it is, it is very funny to you. It is very funny to you. People are watching. People are watching. People know exactly what's going on. I've, I have kids. I feel for the people who lost their loved ones. And you, you, you try to make it seem like some of the council member don't care. We are out there in the community. So I don't think, instead of pointing fingers, let's work together, correct everything. The helicopters are there. It's not the council member, we ordered the helicopters to be there. It's the people in the authority who's in charge. They're the one put those helicopter there for the safety, I guess. So you could blame the council members. We have nothing to do with it. So my whole thing is, we need to come together as a community instead of, instead of, yeah, it is, it is funny to you, Councilman Jackson, yeah. You keep, you keep laughing. You know, you're the one who dividing the community. That's, that's my belief. With the way you speak, putting other people down, and that's not the right way to go. That is not the right way to go. See, you laughing. Yeah, it, it is a laughing matter to you. You know how to rally people, try to divide the community. You're the one, I believe you're the only one in this city council that's trying to divide the community, separate the community. Anyway, Madam, Madam Bia, you heard the, the, um, the, the, um, community spoke, uh, like every week. Please have a re- and respond, like every, every week. I receive the re- and answers. Some of the co- community member might not receive them, they should reach out to the city clerk office, and she will provide them with, with those, those re- and answer every, every week that Madam Bia has. My vote is yes to close the, uh, public portion, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Councilman Khalid. Councilwoman Mims?
So, good evening to the viewing public and to those that are in the office that is shared by myself and Council, um, Councilman Jackson. I will start off like I do every week. Thank you to the public for always coming out, sacrificing your time away from your family and your friends to come down to speak on behalf, not just of yourself, but when you speak, you speak on behalf of everyone else. So I commend you for that. I have taken a strong stand, as some have, are aware, against, uh, wanting to make our meetings televised. The workshops, that was denied. But then when it came to virtual, I was a hard no. And I made it clear, we should never do virtual unless there's an emergency due to the previous meetings, even during COVID, when it dropped a lot of the public calls and we were not able to hear from them. If you go back and watch the meetings over the last maybe four weeks, you will hear me consistently, almost like a robot, say the same exact thing. If you go back and watch the meetings over the last maybe four weeks, you will hear me consistently, almost like a robot, say the same exact thing. I wanted to be clear and on the record, this was a unilateral decision made solely by the president to make tonight's meeting virtual. There was not a poll done. We were not asked if we agreed or disagreed. He made a decision as the president. Many people called me, asked me, someone even told me off and said, well, you should find out why. I said, we were not told why. The president made the decision. So perhaps in closing, Council President, you can let the community know why you made the decision for tonight. In addition, I was not in the chambers when the incident took place last week. I just stepped out to go to the ladies' room. And I came um and after everything had went on. So I wasn't aware of what took place. I did afterwards, I watched the video, but I was not physically in the room. I was in on my way to the bathroom when we heard what was going on, and we came back. By then, it was over. So I just want to make that clear. But for me, we should never deny the public access to come to our meeting and to express their likes and or dislikes. That is their right. They are the taxpayers. They pay our salary. They pay for the lights to be on. They pay for the building to be operational. So we should always want to hear from the public, whether you like what they say, don't like what they say. I've heard uh all of the speakers on tonight. I got messages from all of those people that were not able to get through on the queue. Michelle Tobias, as you know, we talk all the time. I will reach out to you just to see if there's any additional uh uh help that you need, um as well as Michael Price. You talked about night Dav. Uh I'll call you on tomorrow just to get some information. As you're well aware, I live about two blocks from Night Dav. So I would love to hear what those concerns and or issues are so that we can uh move forward and and get them resolved. I would like to put it on record, Madam BA, um hopefully you're listening. I made this request uh a while ago, probably a year ago, and I'm gonna state it again. We have to look into doing a contract for the old trees and oversized trees that are located all throughout this community. If a bad storm comes, and we have had some, we will have major situations, and I I pray there will not be a fatality, because we have a lot of trees that are split in the middle. We have the old uh old roots that are in the ground, and they're coming up through the cement. And then I'll al- also point out again, on Broadway from the bottom of East Side Park all the way up, the trees are kissing each other. They're meeting each other. We need to do a tree trim or a shared service agreement with the county to see if they can come in and assist with this work. And then put out a RFP to try to see uh what money is needed to get all of this work done before there is a serious situation that goes on in this community. Also, I want to put it on record to the BA, we need to take a look um and to uh the director, he is no longer on. But a lot of the lights are out in the community. Um there's a lot of uh streetlights, and we need to do an overview throughout the community. There are many streets that have no lights that are working in this community. Um some of the bridges, I will get that done. That's a collaborative work for the bridges, which is a different process. But for the lights on the light poles, please, Madam BA, please send that message out. We have a lot of communities that are seen. To all of the families, every family of every loved one who has went through, whether they're the victim, the perpetrator, because there's there's hurt on both sides. But I have spoken to some of the family members, not all. I don't have all of the numbers, but my prayers and my heartfelt condolences go out to all of you um with the uh situations that are going on in our community. I also want to highlight that there is going to be on uh this Thursday, a community education presentation on the Passaic County uh budget and also on the support services. This impacts all of us because we consist of county tax as well. But it impacts us because a lot of people receive social services and they need resources. This would be a good opportunity this Thursday night at seven P M uh at Seminary Baptist Church, one ninety-three Heldon Ave. Please come out, please ask questions, and get the information that you need for yourselves and your family. Patterson, I'm born and raised here. I love you. I always want to hear from you. It doesn't matter what time of the day or the night. You deserve to be heard, and you should have been allowed to have access to um our meeting on tonight. And I pray that that we will never disallow the public again from being able to speak. So prayerfully, that will be addressed towards the end um of this. Um but Madam Clerk, thank you so much. I'm praying for you. You know, last week was rough, um but I am glad to see that you are back and you're here. Uh with that being stated, Madam Clerk, my vote is yes to close the public portion.
Thank you, Dr. Mims. Councilman Velez?
Madam Clerk, thank you. Uh let me start saying that the same day, last Tuesday, I did at my part on my trying to speak in the council. In the beginning of the section to close the public portion. I want to send again my condolence to all the victims and family that are mourning in the city of Patterson since that Saturday that we lost a life in Park Avenue and Twenty Second Street. I want to mention again, my heart goes to the family grieving and the family that are hurt at this time. I did it that Tuesday, and I, once again, I do it today. When Councilwoman Marisa Davila mentioned who was the daughter, I met to Mike Taylor. I didn't mention the family of Mike Taylor. I didn't mention all by name, but then I learned afterwards that one of my colleague was part of the family. But I did send my condolence. We all humans. That same day that that young girl was murdered in Siyasi Street in Panhoun, I was there. I spoke to residents. I spoke to neighbors. Because we know that question mark is a trouble neighbor in that section. I spoke to some residents on Twenty Four of Panhoun, and I was making sure that everything was in place. If I had the number of Mr. Mike Taylor in that moment, I will call him at the same time. Because I learned that was his daughter last Tuesday at a council meeting. Um, you know, I don't need to um defend my case in this platform. The video will speak by itself. I think that we are here to conduct business in the city of Patterson. You know, Mrs. Valley Freeman, Commissioner Valley Freeman came on the on the on the call twice and mentioned me, and she mentioned the word respect, and mentioning again twice, respect. Respect goes both ways. Councilwoman Davila once went to the Board of Education. And they was in a Zoom meeting. They didn't let her go in, and she's an elected official. And she could testify on that. I heard about the situation. I didn't went to the Board of Ed to cur- to slander no one there. We need to send the right message when we are talking to the people. You know, there's some people that that express themselves. I wrote the notes. I'm assimilated. I'm listening to it. And the answer will come when they have to come out. Uh Mrs. Caraballo, Commissioner Caraballo, appointed by me to the uh housing authority. I've been listening to your concerns. Uh let me tell you that prostitution that you mentioned, the eighteen-wheelers that you mentioned, the commercial vehicles that going to Twenty Four and to different areas in the city. It was addressed already with the OIC, the officer in charge. Everything that people are mentioning about wars and this and that, that is a law enforcement job. We're here to serve and report to make sure communication between the councilmen and the directors of any department is transparent, but we leave everything in their hands to do the work. We only elected officials. We're here to serve, to report, and to make sure that the job get done. But we cannot do their job. Their job as police is police job. The job of the director of D B W is the job of director of D B W. And you can mention all the departments in the city. That's their job to do if we report something. Last but not least, I know that uh Mr. Billy Prophet stated that we are home in shorts, that we here comfortable, et cetera, zera. I don't know. I'm gonna get up. I still have my jeans. If you went to the meeting today at the uh place that we was, at the uh rec- about the recreational center. You know, you saw me with the same clothes. You know, next week, we're gonna be at the at the chambers, as the council president stated. Hopefully, people have the same decorum that they had through this public portion. And uh we could have a dialogue as adult that we are. Last but not least, I want to send my condolence and my support, you know, to both communities, because we all were looking for peace. We are looking for people. We're looking for people peace, and I just want to send a message to the Palestinian community and the Israeli community. We are praying for both community. We want peace in the world. We want peace in the world. Saying that, Council President, there's other notes that I did tonight. The only thing I was trying to say later on um before coming in and and do my closing remarks, you know, you you run the meeting quite good today. No matter is Zoom, no matter is presence. I commend you for having control of this meeting and keep us in check. Thank you for your service, Madam Clerk. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman Velez. Mr. President?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh thank you. So before my vote, let me address some of the members of the community. Um I would like, I want to start by just express my deepest condolences to the family of Mr. Taylor. His daughter was a very good friend with my son, Alexander. Uh my son was, is also twenty-two, uh twenty-two years old. We 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 have to pray for our city. And as a council president, I will take full responsibility for this Zoom meeting. I will take, once again, full responsibility for this meeting uh virtual. Now I checked with the I T department. Uh everything went well. So when we opened the public portion, um everything went wrong with the line. But now it's sad to be able, it's sad to have this to to be on this situation. We should be on the council chamber. But let me explain to the community the reason why I took this decision, and as I mentioned before, I take full responsibility for this action. And that's the reason why I contacted the state and I asked for resources for us to go on every tree. Because I do, I be- I do believe that we have to do better. We must do better as council members, as a member elected by the public, elected to the community. We must do better. We are here to represent the public and to fight for our people, but also we are here to respect each other and conduct ourselves in a decent way. Um the meeting last week wasn't, it wasn't televised, and I'm not taking any side, as some members of the community mentioned. But last week, there was an incident with Councilman Jackson that tried to beat Councilman Velez. The police officer was in the middle, got in the middle. When every council member is speaking out of the turn, out of the term, I call every council member. I mention Council Cali, Sayulane, wait for your time of the mind. Respect every council member's time. I'm not here to hold anybody. I'm not here to keep everybody on check. We are adult. We are adult elected by the people. My job here is to keep order in this chamber and to make sure that we conduct city business. Our taxpayer elect us to represent them and to make those decisions that will affect them on a positive or the negative way. Last week, there was an incident between those two council members. Councilman Jackson was trying to beat Councilman Velez. It happened before with the CFO, with the Mr. Javier. But that day last Tuesday, Madam Clerk was breaking in tear, and we took Madam Clerk very affected to her office. Jennifer, our secretary, is pregnant with seven months. I cannot allow that to happen at the council chamber. I decide that we gotta do this meeting virtual, and we gotta regroup, because we all have to check ourselves. There is always room to improve. And quite honestly, with my heart and my hands, I will tell you, if you believe that I tried to beat a council Cali, it's right, you wrong. That's my opinion. That's my humble opinion. I'm only one vote. I'm only one person. I'm elected by the public to do the job. But if you believe that conducting yourself that way, it's okay, brother with a bottle, listen, I will tell you, you totally wrong. And I'm not gonna say that you, it's you, that's your way of doing things, that's your way of handling things. But I mentioned in this chamber, I would not allow us to disrespect female, to disrespect any member. We could agree and disagree. We respect. We don't have to disrespect each other. We don't need to try to beat up each other. There's no need for that. There's enough violence in the community. Council members, there's enough killing, there's enough shooting in this community for us to come here and not be able to do business because we don't like each other and because we want to attack and jump each other. That's not right. That's not normal. That's not government. It's not government. Now I call and I ask for a request from the state to do a retreat, for all of us to come together and sit on the table, have a discussion. Well, how do you feel? How can we do? How can we do better? How can we have a better working relationship? We don't need to like each other. You don't like to, you don't need to like the way I smile, the way I dress. You don't need to like none of the stuff. It's not about me. It doesn't care how I look, how I dress, how I, it's not about me. It's not, it's about the city. It's about the people. It's about the people that are suffering in this city. And council members, I will say this again. There is enough violence. There's enough hate out there. There's enough killing out there for us to not be able to make our point across. I'm not saying that we have to get along. We don't need to get along. We don't even need to talk each other if we don't, if you don't want to talk to a council member. But what I'm saying is that right here on the chamber, try to aggressively, try to get on 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 all the council Cali, it's just wrong. I hope, I hope that we could change that with this retreat, and I I hope that we all could attend to the retreat. Whether you like it or not, I want to hear from you. I'm not perfect. I make mistakes. Today, I took the decision because of the administration. I don't want to have my clerk on this situation. I don't want to have my secretary on this situation that we had last week. Because of the, I say, you know what, let's take, let's take, let's take our time. Let's calm down. I'm not defending anybody. We all made mistakes, and we all have problems in this chamber. And we have to acknowledge that and fix that. But as a leader, as council president, I took the decision to go virtual for today. We have not made any decision on virtual meeting. That's uh that's 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 not, that is wrong. As some members of the community, they may, they comment on that. So we go on next Tuesday, we're going back to a workshop. And the following Tuesday, we're going back to a regular meeting. We keep, we stay as a normal. Uh but I really hope that we could have a better working relationship. Not like each other, we don't need that. But the people elect us to go to do city business. We have to respect the employee that we have here. That really affecting Madam Clerk, the secretary, that will affect everybody. So with that being said, council members, so um you will get the information. I know some members of the community spoke about the helicopter around the city. Uh that's, it's not, that's, you know, that that go out of our control. Um tomorrow, I'm gonna have a meeting with OIC, and at the end of the, at the end of the public portion, I will open the floor to Madam BA. Madam BA, there's members of the community, uh so that they ask some question. Uh in the beginning of the meeting already, I mentioned from now on, at the end of the public portion, the administration, they're gonna have to answer to all the question that the public asked, all the question. And if they don't have the answer, they're gonna have to provide the answer in writing uh to the members of the community. Uh so once again, let's keep praying for our city. Uh um you know, let, my condolences to the family that lost their loved one uh in this sense of violence, and I do believe that we could do better in this city. My heart is in this city. My nephew living in 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 Rosapart Boulevard. My nephew have to go to East High School every morning and the afternoon. Right before the shooting, my nephew was around bar, around Rosapart Boulevard. I go through all of that. I go through all of that, and you could laugh, you could do whatever you say, but I go through all of that. I am Patterson. I am Patterson. So you see me in every corner, and I'm not gonna stop working for my community. I love this city. When I came to the city, the city gave me everything I have. I came with this to to the city without nothing, and I feel blessed to be in the city of Patterson. I know I could create a positive atmosphere. I know I could create a positive atmosphere in this community. And I'm go, I'm gonna continue fighting for our senior, for our children, for the people that live in this city that wants to call Patterson home. And once again, we should do better on the way we conducted ourselves at the council chamber. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Mister President.
Hello.
The votes are five yeses, four absences. Public portion of the municipal council regular meeting of Tuesday, October tenth, twenty twenty three is hereby closed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, we have a second reading item.
Council President.
Just one minute, Councilman Jackson, Madam Clerk.
Council President.
Just one minute, Councilman Jackson, you will have the floor. But we have to go to the first reading on number one, Madam Clerk, because I read her. And right after that, we switch into the public portion. So let's do item number one of second reading, item number one of second reading, Madam Clerk.
Yes, um, item number one is a second reading ordinance. Public hearing is required. It's an ordinance amending Patterson Code, section three fifty one regarding lead based paint. It's a Health and Human Services Ordinance, number twenty three dash zero five four.
Move. All right, move by Councilman Velez, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Shaheen Kalik. Roll call, Madam Clerk, uh, public, public hearing is now open, uh, for resolution ordinance number one, members of the public that which you speak on this item.
Let's wait for a minute to see if somebody is there. Madam Clerk, Ryan, can you tell us that somebody is here?
Give me a second.
Yeah, we're checking, it's just a moment.
I see, Madam Clerk, I see a number, A five five.
Nine two five.
Twenty five, twenty eight zero one, is that a no, um?
There, Ryan said there is no one on the line. I don't know why that number appears.
Yeah, see, no move to close a public hearing.
Second.
Move.
Move by Councilman, um, Kalik. Do we have a second?
Yes, I did.
Oh, second for move by Councilman Kalik, second by Councilman Velez. Roll call, closing the public hearing on item number one, Madam Clerk.
Roll call to close the public hearing and item number one, Councilman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilman Kalik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims.
Yes.
Councilman Velez.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Mister President.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
The votes are five yeses, four absences. Public hearing and item number one is hereby closed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, uh, roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number one of second reading.
Yes, Mister President. Roll call and item number one, and it's a second reading ordinance. It's ordinance amending Patterson Code, section three five one regarding lead based paint. Councilman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilman Kalik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims.
So in the meeting, there was an amendment made to this to ensure that it would get communicated in various sources. When I got the packet and we agreed to that, it was supposed to be amended. When I got my packet, I don't see it identify, okay, I do see it. I will, I'm sorry, I'm looking on the wrong page. So I I digress, I do see it in section, um, section D. Okay, I see it was amended and I appreciate that. Thank you for permission, council. With that being stated, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Dr. Mims. Councilman Velez.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Councilman Velez. Mister President.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mister President. The votes are five yeses, four absences. Item number one is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, council members.
The Council President.
I I will go with you, Councilman Jackson. The reason why I took this item was because before with this, the public portion, who was right in the middle, we read the item into the record, but we finished. So I will allow Madam B A, there's some members of the community that they raised some serious concern about the helicopter, about, and I know you have the note that will open the floor for you. And every meeting, we, as soon as we finish the public portion, as soon as we close the public portion, Madam B A, we have a list of answers to those members of the community. If she doesn't have it, we expect it on writing. Councilman, um, Madam B A, right after Councilman Jackson.
Yes, Council President, thank you. Um, for this meeting, there actually aren't, uh, there aren't a lot of specifics that I can address. I know a lot of it was regarding the virtual meeting format. And as you had mentioned, um, the helicopters in particular are are, um, part of an overall policing strategy that the officer in charge, um, has, is has, is working on, and that's not under our purview. Um, I will look, we'll look into some of the issues. Um, I know Victoria Quindo had had put up about, uh, the website. I I looked on it myself and couldn't see exactly what she was referring to in terms of Mayor Williams Warren still listed under the rent leveling section. But, um, I will look and see if there are further details. I know, um, there is a handout there that's, that's part of their, their website resource that we could probably update. But it does say, uh, Mayor Seiya and Director Ramirez as as part of it. But I can look into some further detail there. Um, and I I don't think there's anything else in particular that I can address. Um, again, I know Councilwoman Mims had mentioned some things about the trees. And I will talk to Director Rodriguez. I know they had done some, um, trimming at it at a certain point. And I will, uh, see kind of where, if there's anything further that's gonna be done before, uh, the winter. Um, and the same thing, a follow up with P S E N G. I know they, they have been in contact with them about, um, you know, kind of the lights as we're, again, having the, the longer nights and the shorter days. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Um, Madam B A, Councilman Jackson.
Thank you, Council President. Um, the only reason I'm asking for the floor and I appreciate it is because you, uh, Council President, along along with a few other people, Councilmen Shaheen Kalik, Councilman Velez, has mentioned my name on multiple, um, uh, through multiple occurrences this evening. In fact, through your closing remarks, you talked specifically about me. Um, first, I want to just, uh, address, um, what seems to be a, 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 a very severe self esteem issue. Um, I'm in the room, my, 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 my device is muted. The public doesn't have the ability to hear or see me unless I'm speaking. And I have people in the room who are commenting on or or reflecting on your comments. So I'm laughing at their comments and you are taking it personal, announcing to the public that I might find it funny, you and, uh, Councilman Shaheen as well. But, um, you know, for that matter, you know, again, we we have to discuss and talk about the rights and privileges of being an American. I have the right to be entertained or laugh at and or cry at whatever it is that I feel, um, pertinent. But more importantly, I want to go back to your comment relative to, which is, which is a derogatory comment. Because you, sir, have never had the privilege of seeing me fight. You did, you would understand that you would never classify anything as me trying to fight anyone. I do have the right to go over there and to address, you know, his poor taste of comments. And relative to the CFO, he was addressing the family of which I'm consistently, uh, uh, coming to bat for when it comes to the members of the public. He, uh, um, distastefully addressed the, the family, which I addressed. And then at that point, which I've proven and shown it on video, he gestured to come over to my direction, which I responded, I wish you would do that. Then he got up before I did. You, Council President, failed to address that. I can, I can prove it in the video, which has already been done. Then the B A shoved me two feet, two feet. Uh, I'm a two hundred twenty five, twenty five pound person. Yet again, yet again.
Because we're lying now, Councilman Jackson, you're not allowed to speak and lie.
Madam B A, you know why I'm allowed? So so Councilman, can you, can you wrap it up, Councilman Jackson?
No, I cannot.
Because I, I want, because listen, because I, I want to answer to you. I cannot, I cannot wait to answer you. Because you gotta check, you gotta really analyze yourself. Because if you say that going in one of the council Cali people's face, brother, brother, I don't know, we got, you, you got, you got serious problem. If you think that that's government, uh, just talking to Madam, to Madam B A, the way you talk on the way, on the, on the way that you talk to the clerk, the, the, the B A, the way you treat, the way you treat Councilwoman Davila, you council Cali next to you, is that, that's, that's alive? I don't have to get it. But as Council President, I see the way you talk to Councilwoman Davila, which is your Cali, and she's a woman. I see the way you treat Madam B A, which is a woman. I see the way you go on people's face. So are you think that that's correct? The answer is no. Let's continue with the meeting, Madam B A, we finish right here. We got three more items.
No, I'm not done, I'm not done.
Madam Clerk, no, now, yes, you done, yes, you done.
I'm not done, I had the floor.
Yes, you done, you done. You, you don't have the floor, you don't have the floor.
I had the floor.
You don't have the floor, sir.
And the B A interrupted me.
You know what, Councilman, that's the floor. Listen, you don't want to have an effective meeting. You know, listen, you know, the reason why I say that I know you is because you don't want to have an effective meeting. You don't care about this, about the thing that we have to talk about, decision that we have to make. Listen, I get.
The problem is, you don't want, you don't want me pointing out your deficiencies.
I get it.
You don't want me, you don't want me pointing out your ignorance.
Really well, I get that.
Pointing out your deficiencies, you don't want me pointing out your ignorance.
Listen, you know.
The fact that, the fact that you don't even understand the decorum.
You know what, I see you.
The fact that you don't understand that I have the floor, that you.
You don't have the floor, you say, you're finished.
I did not say I finished, the B A interrupted me. I did not say I finished.
Finished.
The B A interrupted me.
I give you the, I give you the floor, so I I mute you. So council members, so Councilman Jackson finished, I gave him the floor for him to explain.
Don't have the right to just leave me, that's why you want this thing to be virtual.
Of the community, we have.
That's why you want this thing to be virtual. And trust me, the public is.
We got our second reading.
Watching you be a lapdog in the mirror now. The public is watching.
We got item number two, Madam Clerk, item number three, item number four, item number five. So they're all together on second reading and those are handicap, Madam Clerk. So as you hear the recommendation from Corporation Council, we could read it order to the record and have one public hearing for the, for the, for all those items.
Okay, so it's items two through six, Council President. They're all, um, establishing handicap parking spaces. So item number two is a second reading ordinance, establishing handicap parking spaces at various locations in city roads. It's, um, Public Works Ordinance twenty three zero five five. It's one thirty twelfth Avenue.
Council President, do we have quorum?
Uh, yes, we do, yes, we do. They all on mute, Council President, uh, Councilman, uh, Velez, but we do have quorum. We have the second word, Councilman. Um, we have Councilwoman Davila, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Davila.
We don't have a quorum.
We don't have a quorum, it seems. Councilman Jackson just left.
Jackson left. Move to adjourn, Councilman.
Give me, give us, give us a minutes, let's get in touch. Council members, those are handicap, uh, the, the resident of the city of Patterson rating for those handicapped to be installed.
Point of privilege, we cannot have any discussion without a quorum.
No, I understand, I understand, Councilwoman Mims. So, um, Madam Clerk, get in touch with Councilwoman Davila to see if Councilwoman Davila can get back because those are the only items that we need to finish this meeting. And those are handicap establishing, establishing handicap parking space at various locations. And we have a large number, those are handicapped senior that live in our community that they deserve to have their handicap because they apply on the legal, the legal way. And if not, um, so let me, give us a minute, Councilmember. If we don't have a quorum, we can adjourn the meeting, Madam Clerk, and we call those handicapped for the next meeting. We finish most of the agenda, we're all done.
It's a president, what can, what can take place is those items could be added on as a special meeting so that we could vote on them, um, the next workshop.
Yes, next week, council members, next week, we're gonna have a special meeting. Uh, motion to adjourn this meeting.
Uh, move, Council President, before you move the motion, I I just want you to please, uh, tomorrow, uh, put a message, uh, what happened tonight to close this meeting, please.
Yes, thank you, I will. It was move by Councilman Velez, second by Council President Manders, roll call to close this meeting.
Roll call to close the, uh, to adjourn the council regular meeting of Tuesday, October tenth. Con, what Councilwoman Mims, Kalik, Councilman Kalik, is he there?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here, Madam Clerk.
Okay, Councilman Kalik.
Uh, my apology to, uh, Councilman Jackson for, uh, mentioning his name. If I hurt his feeling, at the same time, every meeting, he mentioned everybody's name more than once. So my bad for mentioning your name and my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman Kalik. Councilwoman Mims.
Patterson, we need prayer, we need healing, we need unity, and we need to come together and be on one accord. We have a lot of things going on in our community. Many people are hurting, um, for their loved ones and we have to allow the main thing to be the main thing. Let us focus on that, come away from the other things so that this city can move forward in the right direction. With that stated, um, to the view on public, have a great night, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Dr. Mims. Councilman Velez.
Once again, I pray for Israel and Palestinian community. Uh, we looking for peace and, uh, we praying for that. Uh, you know, there's, the Bible say faith without action is not faith. We could pray, but we need action. Uh, let's pray for our city, let's pray what we do. Um, I know I could go to bed and sleep in peace. Uh, amen. Um, I know you, you concerns, I know you worry. My heart goes to you, to a family and also to the family of, uh, our Iman Al Katala. Uh, sorry if I spell it wrong. And I believe and I to excuse my colleague, um, Aldous Sees is, uh, also he's in, worrying, concerned with what's going on in his country, you know, I don't want to excuse him, but I I may understand what's going on, uh, to Madam B A. Uh, stand strong, you know, we got family, Madam B A. You know, all this, uh, Council President, um, you said it right, is a whole year that we are in this situation, the whole year. That's count, that's not counting previous years. So hopefully, moving forward, if the idea of, uh, retrieving, retrieve is a good idea, um, we need to know who's going to that retreat before I go in here. Uh, I want to make sure that the retrieve, I know you mentioned about separate conversation with the, the expert, you know? But, uh, that's the plan that, uh, that you put forward and, uh, hopefully, we could do it before going into the municipality, uh, legal municipality. Councilman, uh, uh, Shaheen Kalik, you understand where we at? We all suffer from the same situation, the same conduct. You know, we could express ourselves, we respect, as always Council President stated. You know, I stated in the news, if any councilman, any councilman has something to give to the community, bring it on board and give it to the community. But if it's gonna be negative, stay within your pocket, don't give it to the community. My community understand. And when I say my community, I'm talking to community at large. My world is so diverse that they understand who their councilman is. And they have seen, uh, the work that I have done as a councilman for the, since two thousand sixteen. I want to thanks all the clergies from every nationality that called me to give me the support, a prayer and to letting me know that I was wise and used to God wisdom in difficult situation that I was last week. Saying that, Madam B A, you know, I'm a phone call away. And everyone here knows that I'm here to work with everyone that want to work to move the city forward. Madam Clerk, saying that, once again, you ran the meeting quite good, you know? Um, yeah, to, I had to get you more water for your office. Um, my vote is yes, Council President. And, uh, hopefully Friday is the celebration of the Hispanic Heritage Month. Hopefully to be there to celebrate together today, uh, the celebration of the Hispanic Heritage Month. Thank you for all of the individuals in this platform, uh, even Dr. Passat.
Thank you, Councilman Velez, Mister President.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Clerk. So before my vote, I want to take this time to apologize to we couldn't vote on it because we, the quorum, we didn't have any quorum. Councilman Jackson left the meeting, all the council member left the meeting. That, that he mentioned my name because in multiple video, he make, he make fun about my accent, the way I speak. the way I speak, because I'm a. To her are the people that we working with, you know? So, so we got to be mindful of that. And as a Council President, I'll lead us. All right, good night, Councilman.
Good night. Thank you, Council President.
Now it's good?
Council President.
I commend you, Council President.
Yes, please. The rule that you can talk to you.
I don't think we need a special meeting. We could just move to the next regular meeting, those four items. Seven items.
There's going to be a special meeting.
Councilman Kalik, you're on TV. So, just, Councilmembers, I know we break the quorum, but just let me, allow me to, um, I know we finished the meeting, but I did, I definitely want my speech to go on record. Uh, it's important, and, and just in closing of this meeting, I want to apologize to the resident of the City of Patterson, because, um, the last person on the, on the meeting was Councilman Jackson. He decided to leave the meeting, and because of that, we couldn't approve fifty-seven handicap parking space for our senior that have been waiting for month and month for those handicap parking space. As I mentioned before, that's not government. When you do that, you don't really, you don't really care about the people. You don't really care about the community. We got to do better. It's not right for you to come here and try to beat one of you, Council Kalik. It's not right the way you talk to Madam BA on those meeting. We could disagree, but we have to disagree with respect. I mentioned in the beginning of the meeting that I take full responsibility for the meeting to go virtual. But the main reason why I took the decision was because I need to protect Madam Clerk. I need to protect the secretary and the people that work here. And because Councilman Jackson was trying to beat another Council Kalik, the police have to get in the middle. It was a very emotional situation for the clerk, for the secretary that is seven months pregnant, and I cannot allow that to happen. I called the state, the state allow us to go on a retreat that is going to be the first week of November. And I hope to see my eight councilmembers, my eight Council Kalik on that retreat to talk about better practicing government and how can we get along? We don't need to like each other. Uh, it's because it's not about us. You don't need to like the way I smile, the way I talk. And, and Councilman Jackson, you mentioned my name multiple time, but I never been offended when you make fun of my accent, the way I talk. On the, on the, on the, on the, I'm fin, on the, on, on TV, on, on your live video. It's not about us, it's not about how we look, it's about what can we do for the City of Patterson? There is violence in our community, our children, they die in this community. There's people losing their, their home because of the property tax. We must do better. And when we cannot close the meeting and do city business, it's not right for the people. It's not right for the resident of the City of Patterson. And as a Council President, I'll do whatever it takes to correct that. So, I'm inviting all my Council Kalik to go to retreat to fix the problem that is going out on this council, and it's been going out for years. But I got to do something to correct the problem. Next Tuesday, we're going to be on the chamber, and I'm expecting the quorum and respect from the public and from the councilmembers as well. Because this is not the picture that I want all the city to look from Patterson. We could do better. We are elected by the people to respect our resident and protect and work for them the right way. Not try to beat people on the chamber, not try to talk down to a female. That's not who we are, Councilmembers. And if you agree and you support that, that is totally wrong. It is, it is totally wrong. So, next, uh, Friday, I would like to invite all the resident of the City of Patterson to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. Let's pray for our community. We're going to be here Friday afternoon at five PM. We're going to celebrate diversity in the City of Patterson. It's going to be a great program. Let's pray for our community. Let's come together as one Patterson. We have over fifty-two nationality in the City of Patterson. And there's some people that they want the community to be divided, dividing concrete. Don't allow certain group of people to divide a community. We all live in the City of Patterson, we all facing the same situation, the same violence, lack of services. We all going through the same situation. Why not working together to make our city better? Why not working together to bring peace in our community? There's enough violence in our youth out there. And if they see the way we conducting ourselves in this chamber, we would not be the best example for them. We cannot ask them to be peaceful and to respect all the people when we can now, when you cannot respect you, Council Kalik. When you, Councilman Jackson, want to beat you, Council Kalik.
Point of order, Council President, this conversation.
Say, I'm not, it's, I'm closing the meeting. With that being said, I would close the meeting. And my vote is, and, and before that, I would remind everybody. We're going to be on Friday, Hispanic Heritage Month is coming on Friday. I invite everybody to come to the City of Patterson, because we all want Patterson. We all want community. We have over fifty-two nationality, and we, and we got to treat each other like brothers and sister. I invite everybody to go on that retreat, because something have to be done. We taking everything as a personal level, and it's supposed to be, it's, we're supposed to be doing city business in the City of Patterson to help this community move forward, and it's not happening. So, with that being said, my vote is yes. I'll see you on Friday. Have a good night, Patterson.